Um, let's present again tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, through the chair, uh, I just, uh, wanted, uh, if, if you could, to talk a little bit about how this is a live document. Just for the public to know that once it's done, it's not like it's sealed in concrete or anything. This is, this, this will shift and change exactly right.
Yes, uh, through the chair to the councillor. Um, yes, OCPs are definitely live documents. And, um, at this point, council, the public and staff are trying to draft the best possible document based on the available data. How? So, um, it's expected that OCPs could be amended, um, a number of times based on living circumstances. And, uh, perhaps, I think the mayor had mentioned this previously around engagement with first nations. Some of the nations have agreed to engage with the city and some of them chosen not to. If we were to, uh, uh, just, uh, engage with those, uh, indigenous nations, we may need to make some changes to the OCP to reflect the desire of those, um, communities. As well, the province with the recent legislative changes has recognized the fact that OCPs are living documents and they've mandated that municipalities must review their OCP every five years. Thank you.
So, just on my list of questions in terms of, can you report on any, um, public correspondence that occurred before the deadline and also was there any further correspondence that was received after the deadline?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes. So, in total, we've received fifty-eight pieces of correspondence before the deadline, which was Friday at noon. Uh, there were fifty-five letters regarding, uh, section four point nine, the Granite Point redevelopment plans. Uh, two pieces of correspondence regarding Schedule F, which is the cycling and trail routes map, particularly around Perry Lane. And then there was one piece of correspondence regarding a variety of different topics. Uh, but an hour, hour and a half ago, staff did receive an additional forty-plus letters. However, we haven't provided those to council because we haven't had an opportunity to review them, redact them, that sort of thing.
Thank you very much. Councillors, any other further questions? Okay, seeing none at this point. So, my next thing is I'm supposed to ask if anybody wants, for the public wants to speak. And of course, I already have a list here and I just want to let people know that some people have come in, um, later. I will be asking if you didn't sign the list and you decide that you would like to speak. I will be acknowledging you as we go through the proceedings, but I'm gonna start with the list I have, um, in front of me, if that's, uh, okay for everybody. So, um, given that we have a list of speakers, when you come up to speak, um, please state your name, streeted, uh, street name and describe your relationship to the issue or presentation. Uh, all comments and answers are, are through the mayor who is addressed as Mayor Morrison. Speak slowly and clearly and speakers are limited to five minutes and you have a little, you can wave when, love thirty seconds left.
Um, I can wave this blue folder.
Okay, perfect. So you'll get a little sign there.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, so let's get started. The first name I have on the list is Kim Bader. Kim, welcome.
Hello, Mayor Morrison. I'm Kim Bader. I live in, um, Rosemont in nineteen oh one, uh, Chocat Avenue. Uh, my door is out to the second hole of the golf course. And, uh, I have a, a few comments I wanna make, uh, brief. Um, you know, when I look at the OCP that the state it's in now, I, I, I like what I see and I see that there is a, a focus on affordable housing. Um, and I, and I guess I have some concern with the current proposal that's before you, uh, in terms of what would happen with the development on the golf course lands. Given that I, I lived in Banff for thirty-two years and watched Banff and Canmore, um, deal with, um, being a tourism community and the pressures of development that come along with that. Uh, having also visited Whistler and, and many other resort communities in Canada and, and other, um, provinces. And, um, I, I think there's a cautionary tale here. We, we sometimes say, oh, we can't really predict the future. But we can. We can see what happens in tourist resort communities. And that is the, these high-end developments take up precious land resource. They also spike, um, housing prices and so you never get ahead. And what ends up happening is in Banff, people who lived in Banff ended up moving to Canmore. And then they, they ended up moving from Canmore to Cochrane. In Whistler, they, they, uh, moved to surrounding communities. And so people who live, who work in the community often then can't be residents of the community because the cost of housing, um, exceeds what service industry wages are, what, what students can afford. Um, so I think, I, I just urge you to pay attention to the creep that happens with tourism driving the economy, which, which certainly does here in Nelson to some degree. You've got, uh, principles, objectives and principles and you've got targets. Um, but I think you, you need to strengthen the piece around affordable housing. I would urge you to strengthen it, whether that's creating a specific percentage. Uh, you know, I think you need to look at the mechanism that works best here. I see that there's some things in place in terms of, you know, forty percent of, um, uh, you know, targets, but, but I, I, I think I'd ask you, please, um, build those stronger. Because once that precious land's gone, it's almost impossible to recover. So, so please look at that. Um, I am concerned about, um, four point nine, the, the commercial development in Rosemont attached to the, the new golf course development. Um, Rosemont is a different kind of community in Nelson. We need to keep the commercial development in the downtown core as much as possible. I, I do not believe we need the level of commercial, commercial development that's proposed for that area. Um, I also have a concern. I, I live right beside the golf course and myself and many neighbors have had cars and our buildings hit by golf balls consistently. They come flying across Chocat Avenue. Some kid is gonna get hit with a golf ball going down to Rosemont School. Or, you know, I had a neighbor who was missed by less than a foot with, uh, uh, someone who drove wildly. And it happens frequently because I sit on my deck and watch it. Um, so I would urge you to require the golf course, the current golf course and/or, um, the redevelopment to put adequate screening up because what's there is not working currently. And if Halo chooses to not go ahead with the development, which is a possibility, the, um, current not-for-profit golf course may or may not be able to remain viable. We know they've struggled for years. Uh, I, I think it's really important to think about, well, what, what should that land look like? What, what should we do with that land? Uh, is it possible to have a, a short, uh, like a nine-hole course there and a whole bunch of affordable housing? Is it possible to keep green space? But, um, we don't want it to just go to the next developer who will do something else that may not really answer the needs of affordable housing in our community. I think affordable housing has to be at the top of the list in all of your considerations when you're looking at development right now. Thank you for your time.
Sorry, um, I didn't get my complete, um, little list of things I was supposed to read to you. And I know that people like to clap, but one of the things is in a public meeting. Because you, you cannot do that because you like that that proponent said, the next proponent might speak against that. You can't boo him. So, um, I, I, I just need you to, um, um, as lovely as it would be to clap, uh, because clopping usually isn't consistent at a public meeting. I can tell you that from years of sitting here. Um, I have to ask you to refrain from cheering or clapping, um, once a speaker has, um, finished my, my regrets. I, I follow this script so I don't miss anything and this year, this meeting, it wasn't there in my little, um, script because there's a lot of things to make sure that a public meeting, um, runs according to the, the rules and regulations. So, my apologies. Um, congratulations, Kim. You got a clap, but we're gonna not do that anymore. Next up, I have Rosie Everly.
Good evening, Mayor Morrison. Um, my name is Rosemary Everly. I live at five oh eight Innis Street in Pappill. Um, and I would just like to iterate my concerns too about the development up in Rosemont. Uh, and to make sure that the official community plan, um, is worded sufficiently enough that it does serve us. In, um, I'd like to think when Mayor Dooley and council voted in twenty nineteen to amend the official community plan to support Granite Point, they had not thought of the unintended consequences. But we know those unintended consequences now because Halo has unashamedly advertised a very she-she and exclusive, uh, resort-style development with a very she-she, uh, commercial hub. So, my request to council, um, and, uh, if I may quote you, Mayor Morrison, I understand that, uh, council's idea of a commercial hub was a cornerstone. Um, whereas I don't think that's, uh, Halo's idea of a commercial hub. So, I just asked council to consider removing the amendment to the twenty nineteen OCP that allowed the commercial hub up there. And just again, t- to reiterate that we do everything we can to make Nelson, keep Nelson a place where everybody can live. Thank you.
I one time clapped in the parliament because there was somebody there who was like a doctor that had done something wonderful and the security guard was like, no, no. Seems really cool.
Um, and next up, we have Adam Thomas.
Morrison, thank you, council. Um, I'm just another concerned citizen here, uh, who is concerned about the, of, of, of course, the affordability of Nelson and, um, the unique disposition, uh, of the city that we all live in and, and I all love. Um, regarding section four, four point nine, uh, I will also request that the council consider removing the, um, from the two nineteen, twenty nineteen OCP, the amendment that allows for the commercial hub, uh, at Granite Point. Um, because I cannot see myself how that is a good fit for our community. Um, a new commercial hub risks draining vitality from Baker Street. Uh, and risks, uh, threatens our local businesses, uh, our culture and economic resilience that we have worked so long to develop. Development, the development of a luxury community and commu- commercial hub is, in my opinion, not in line with the community values that have and continue to make Nelson a true jewel. The vibrancy and creativity of the city comes not from, uh, financial wealth over there, but from, um, a cultural wealth in here. And it is not built by developers, but it is sustained by the citizens. Um, and so with that in mind, uh, I think it would be in alignment with the stated values and goals and outcomes around affordability and, um, uh, green space and accessibility that, uh, the, uh, that the commercial hub, uh, at Granite Point will not be allowed to continue.
Next up, we have, um, Stavland Danbrows.
Thank you, Mayor Council. My remarks will take about four minutes. In two thousand nineteen, Granite Point applied for both a rezoning and an OCP amendment at the same time. Those two processes moved together, moved forward together and in practice, they became conflated. The rezoning with its three hundred housing units came the lightning rod for public attention. That's what everyone heard about and debated. Meanwhile, the OCP amendment, which established a commercial hub, slipped through virtually unnoticed. I would argue that it was the more controversial of the two and people realized it was even being decided. I have in my hand a copy of the two thousand nineteen Granite Point neighborhood plan. Within it, we find the words of dozens of residents who pushed back at public meetings and through letters. Their concerns focused on traffic and road safety, on density and public height, building heights, on pressure to schools and services, on the loss of green space and wildlife, on noise, disruption and potential impacts to the enjoyment of their properties. Every single resident who complained focused on the rezoning and the housing units. There's not one mention of the OCP amendment or commercial hub. And in the years since, not a single resident I've spoken to who participated in that process was even aware that an OCP amendment was on the table. And then on the same evening in two thousand and nineteen, council approved both the rezoning and the OCP amendment. The rezoning was debated by council, but the OCP amendment passed without any further scrutiny. Years later, a developer, who shall remain nameless, used a national newspaper advertorial to proclaim that Nelson already had a resort community penciled into its OCP, which may have been an odd exaggeration, to say the least, but either way, it left residents feeling blindsided. Here is the contrast. Two thousand nineteen residents thought they were debating traffic density. How many units, how tall, how much congestion, what it would mean for schools and green space. Five years later, they woke to headlines about a sweeping luxury resort complete with Austrian crystal glassware, hydrotherapy baths, ultrasonic colonics, Urquhart gold speck towels and porcelain from Vire and Bach. The process may have met the letter of the law, but it failed its purpose of meaningful public engagement. And what we are left here to, with today is a stale inherited approval whose shelf life has run out. Since two thousand and nineteen, Nelson has undergone this OCP rewrite, adopted new climate and sustainability priorities, faced mounting housing challenges and seen massive community pushback over this very commercial hub. It is no longer reasonable or smart for an unnoticed OCP amendment from six years ago to dictate our city's future. I therefore request that council sunset section four point nine of the draft OCP in its entirety. I have on my other hand, ninety-seven letters from people who could make it here tonight, who feel exactly the same way. This is about restoring faith and transparency in the OCP process. If Granite Point or any developer wishes to pursue a commercial hub, they are free to reapply, this time with full public knowledge and scrutiny. Thank you for your time.
You guys just can't resist handing back. Next up is Veno Art.
Hi, Mayor Morrison. I am, uh, here to talk about my concern about the commercial hub at the Granite Point area and, uh, say that I'm against it and want us to, uh, just focus on affordable housing and not let this, uh, be a possibility to go through. And, uh, yeah, that's all I have to say. I, uh, grew up in Fernie and I've seen repercussions from, uh, similar style developments and it really affects the town and, and, yeah, just really changed the, the culture of the town when you have this style of housing coming in and people that are buying them up as second homes or whatnot. And, uh, that's why I moved here and that's why I love it here. So, thanks.
Next up, Gray Musser. Just, just a reminder, a, a request from a councillor to make sure you state your name and where you live, please.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. My name is Gray Musser. I currently reside at one oh eight High Street. I was born and raised in the West Coobies. And I want to take this opportunity to urge council to remove section four point nine from the OCP and restore Granite Point to its twenty thirteen's OCP status. Uh, the reason is straightforward. Most residents choose this city for its heritage, uniqueness and beauty. It's not Squamish, Kelowna, Banff or Aspen. People value it for this difference. Uh, Nelson, I believe, is at a turning point. Um, if we adopt, uh, policies that accommodate, uh, any outside developer's wishes, no matter how narrow, exclusive or self-interested, we lose the very qualities that define our community. Other municipalities have faced the same challenge, have chosen to act, um, protecting their character uh, to become, uh, the foundation for their long-term success. Uh, we now have an opportunity to do the same here. Um, it's also important to note that, uh, public concern on this issue is broad and well documented. The petition which was submitted earlier this year, which can, included over twenty-five hundred signatures demonstrates strong community alignment with this request to remove section, uh, four point nine from the new draft of the OCP. Uh, taking this step will affirm council's commitment to safeguarding the city's character and ensuring a balanced, sustainable future. Thank you.
I'm gonna go with Andrew Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm here representing the Nelson and Area Community Transportation Group. Um, it is about transportation sections of the OCP. Put my glasses on here. And we understand that the OCP is a guiding document for the city and residents. We have studied the transportation-related aspects of the OCP and have developed a detailed response to both. Uh, on the first and the five-and-a-half-page transportation section five point eight. And secondly, the cycling trails, cycling and trail routes map, section F, with its approximate twenty current and future, uh, trails and routes. So, we provide a report to you as well. We believe that we provide the OCP necessary, uh, perspectives. We have also studied the XN Nelson Next document and we are responding to the expectation, expectation that residents participate in all ways and to support the city in meeting the climate challenges outlined in Nelson Next. And I quote here from Nelson Next, page eleven. Nelson Next will require unprecedented collaboration and action from every resident, organization, business and sector. We are a residence group of experienced and committed pedestrians, cyclists and transit users. We call ourselves in Nelson an Area Community Transportation Group. It is Nelson and Area. And as our Nelson community comprises both those who live within the city and those who live in area neighborhoods closely adjacent to the city. Two authorities, but one community. We all work and study and shop and recreate and more within the city. Our group includes a wildlifeologist, a health information specialist, two primary physicians, a professional planner, a heat, hydraulic heating specialist and a transit and climate environment advocate. It is clear to us all, both the city and the residents of Nelson, from the heavy and increasingly large number of vehicles driving and parking in Nelson, that there must be a dramatic and urgent increase in the proportion of citizens who walk and cycle and use transit. A climate emergency also requires rapid substantial response from all of us. We've had good conversations with most of the council members, with senior management as well as development services and climate leadership planners. We think that cycling, pedestrian and transit users, user groups and residents such as ours could be effective in what is expected in Nelson Next. From the residents and citizens of our wider community that we need to set with the city the Ministry of Transport and Transit and the RCK at tables where discussions regarding infrastructure and conditions for pedestrians, cyclists and transit users are considered and decided. We believe that Nelson needs effectively involved residents to be champions and advocates. Final note here, at least seven Nelson residents will be attending the BC Cycling Coalition Active Transportation Summit in Kelowna, in Kelowna, uh, as of later this week. Three of our group is in, uh, will participate. This speaks of the level of active transportation commitment from our citizens. Our request then is that the OCP includes this perspective. That capable citizen and citizen groups committed to advocacy for active transportation and transit be asked by the city to participate in the set of tables where active transportation, active transportation and transit issues are considered and decided. This is necessary to be able to effectively collaborate. Such a, but, public participation was recommended in the June nineteen ninety-five Urban Systems, um, Integrated Transportation Strategy Report to the City. So, you know, this is a good plan, I think, obviously, uh, to involve citizens, residents effectively in planning regarding active transportation and transit use. Thank you for your attention and for, thank you, consideration. Thank you.
Next up, I have Kiara Lynch.
Hello, council and mayor. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to our concerns this evening. Um, I'm Kiara Lynch. I grew up in this area. I am an art curator and I'm also a local realtor. Um, primarily, I serve young people, first-time homebuyers, farmers, seniors, and I try to focus my business on local, the local community. Um, these people are finding it harder and harder to afford housing here and I'm very concerned with the way that the direction this community is taking. And regarding pricing, the price of, of affordable housing in the area primarily. And regarding the OCP, I did not feel like the commercial hub as proposed in section four point nine was clearly, um, we weren't given an opportunity to speak to it or maybe we were, but we didn't understand that we had that opportunity. And it's a real, this commercial hub is a real concern to me because, um, it will focus on the developer's clientele and not the people of this community. It will provide services to them primarily. Um, I'm not opposed to a community hub per se in Rosemont myself because that could go along the lines of walkable cities, green cities. But it's the fact that it's the developer who would own this commercial hub that is really problematic. Um, therefore, I, along with most of the others who spoke here tonight, do request that council remove section four point nine from the OCP and bring it back to its twenty thirteen version. Thank you so much.
I have Bernadette Lynch next.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dr. Bernadette Lynch and I live at seven eleven Latimer Street. I'm a home, homeowner here in Nelson, having bought within the past five years. We came here from living in Banff and then Canmore, Alberta, where we saw, as a previous speaker said, how the unbridled expansion of those towns pushed residents from Banff to Canmore where the commercial commercialization of the downtown has by now made both towns virtually unrecognizable, causing the loss of what made them distinct and turning them into a Disneyland caricature of both towns. Too expensive for local people to live. Too late, the town councils have ruined what drew people to live there in the first place. We came here to get away from that. And I understand the tax dollar temptation of big outside investment. It's very understandable for a council, but it comes with far too high a cost. Please remove section four point nine from the O C P.
Next up, I have Sammy, don't know his first or last name. I know what you're gonna tell us.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Um like most people here, uh I'm concerned about the developments in Granite Point. Uh I live on Hendrick Street today, I'm a former resident of Rosemont, I'm a business owner in town as well. Um and yeah, my concerns are basically that the developers in question are, have proven to be really unethical. Um they are very divisive, their messaging and branding is entirely to to uh people who are outside of this community. They scoff and make fun of the community and that's not really what should be welcome to Nelson. Uh pretty much everybody in this town has spoken up against this developer and how they're approaching uh this uh development and uh yeah, the way in which the section four point nine was added into the O C P without any kind of meaningful public engagement defeats the purpose of a community plan, it's not really a community plan, it's the desires of the developer um for profit um while creating divisiveness and the community was raising uh prices. Um yeah, we're in the midst of a an a housing affordability crisis. Um I think the first speaker, uh Kim, talked about how the O C P as a whole has lots of sections that focus on affordable housing and this kind of does the opposite of that, so it's like, is the focus affordable housing or not? Um and like most people here, I uh urge um you guys to strike uh section four point nine in its entirety from the O C P. Give your answer.
Okay, next up, I have Aaron Kraken.
Hi everyone, I'm Mayor Morrison, thanks for having us. Um yeah, like many people before me, um we come in to speak about the same issue. My name is Aaron Korbacher and I live at one forty-four, fourteen forty-five Knox Road. Um I'm a bit of a procrastinator, so I'm halfway through what I wrote, so I'll read a little bit and then I'll speak off the top. I moved to Nelson six years ago and I currently have the pleasure of living adjacent to the Granite Point Golf Course. Um and I'm here to request that Council remove section four point nine from the O C P. Um I moved here because of the mountains and I've stayed because of the culture. Um along with our city being an arts, culture, and tourism hub of the interior, we are also a city rooted in care. This beautiful and inclusive city is built off the backs of working-class people who run businesses, volunteer, raise families, create, and build community each and every day. I fear that the proposed luxury development will not bring in clientele that support or contribute to our community in a meaningful way. As it is advertised by the developers, Nelson is to be flown in and flown out of after a few rounds of golf. Um as a thirty-four-year-old, many of my similarly aged peers are looking to start families. Um but the price of homes um is pushing them out. Many of them are choosing to live in places like Salmo or the Valley because, or Castlogar or Caslow because they simply can't afford to live in Nelson. Um these are people who want to contribute to our communities in meaningful ways and build on the wonderful culture that we all have created. Um and just on this piece about transparency and trust in planning, um I strongly believe that this is a time where our city and our government needs to build more trust with the public. I'm sure you've had many people coming in here um who are talking about a lot of the other developments in Nelson and maybe aren't um uh rooted in facts, but there is a current rise in distrust with public institutions. And um in twenty nineteen, um residents opposed the rezoning but were never clearly informed that a permanent O C P change was tucked in alongside it. So this in itself undermines public trust, so I really hope that the Council makes a decision this time around to start, continue to um build that trust with the community. Um so yeah, once again, just requesting that we remove a four point nine from the O C P. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of my list, and like I said at the beginning, is that a number of you have come into the room um since I was handed the list, cause this was a sign-up at the at the door. Are there other people who would like to speak? Gentlemen at the door, on in? And so if you could tell me slowly, so I can add you onto the list, what your name, first name and last name is.
Paul Sasso, and I live on Creed Street, I'm in Nelson. And uh thanks for having me, thanks everyone for coming so much. Um I've been working on this uh halo thing for quite a while and it's been thoroughly interesting. Um what I would like to say is, I would, I feel almost thankful for them for coming by with their terrible pitch and totally not reading the room. We really needed to be galvanized, and we are galvanized. And and I can tell you, these guys are um are a symptom. And getting rid of four point nine, I think is great, let's remove that, let's keep Rosemont residential. And let's kind of pull the carpet out from under them a little bit. Um but I would also like to note that there are about a dozen other developers building million-dollar condos in this town as we speak who didn't roll in and write an article in the Globe and Mail proclaiming their kind of idiocy. So uh I think we need to, um while we deal with this particular situation in this way that I must thank Gray for all his work, going to the bottom of this rabbit hole and figuring this out. Well done. Um and um but I would also say we need to look at this more broadly and we need to figure out how and why this happened and how we can move towards the things that everyone in this room uh believes in and is and the direction where we want this to go, our town. And so I have a couple of ideas and there's a million more that we can develop over the coming years and months. Um but one of them would be, um we have uh an opportunity when people are rezoning um land to dictate how that rezoning goes. And Vancouver and many other municipalities are are getting into this now and making it um necessary that when there is a rezoning, we're mandating affordable housing. So the golf course is zoned park, as you know. And there may be other um land in this area that is zoned park. Then why don't we just say that park is, parkland is a priority, as is affordable housing and this is all in the O C P already. So if if an organization um such as the Golf Course Society comes to the city and asks you have lo- land rezoned from parks to high-density residential, let's take say, I mean, we're got the percentages, but say fifty percent remains park, twenty-five percent goes to affordable housing, and twenty-five percent can go to market housing. Um uh, I have one other idea. What was the other idea? Okay, give me one second here. Do I have one second? Probably. Oh yeah. And also, um a lot of people expressed interest in affordable housing, keeping things affordable here, and where are we gonna get the money to do that? I know affordable housing is difficult for the city to achieve, they don't often pay a lot of development taxes. Well, let's look at a progressive development tax rate wherein somebody wants to build huge development, multi-million dollars, or wants to build multi-million dollar houses, let's raise the tax on that incrementally as we get into these um higher-priced items without, where there will be no affordable housing made available. Um just like income tax or whatever, you wanna build something shiny that's not helping the cohesiveness of the community of the affordability, let's tax that more strongly and and bring that into an affordable housing fund where we can then um root that in a way that's gonna keep this community accessible. Thank you.
Thank you. Um young lady with the glasses.
Young lady with the glasses.
Uh Mayor and Council, thank you for taking the time to listen to all the comments today. My name's Claire Kelly and I live at Fortin Main Street West in Rosemont. I am um a resort town refugee and this is where I moved to from Canmore, where I grew up. Only two members of the graduating class of my year currently reside in Canmore and they are forty-year-olds living in their parents' basements. So I would like to just lend my voice to say, we do already know what happens in a situation where you support what I would describe as an inorganic neighborhood. So instead of organic businesses slowly buying pieces of property and applying to have the use or the zoning changed, you have a very large development relative to those other um areas that becomes a pre-planned community. And what I'd like to say is, what I hear people voicing in the community is, they want an organic community where we deal with some of these issues in in a less intensive way. So instead of approving one large project, we have the time to make small mistakes, um learn from small wins, instead of putting all of our eggs into one basket. The language in the uh to to echo what one uh speaker has said, it's not necessarily that small commercial is a problem in Rosemont. We all appreciate the benefits in Corner Store. What becomes problematic is when there's intention to build as an isolated community or village where it's it's sort of designed to serve the people who live in that particular small area. So we would hope that, and how can the O C P reflect that that there would be natural integration between the folks that reside and use the services of Granite Point with the folks living in Rosemont. At this point, there really doesn't seem to to be a connection there. Like there doesn't seem to be a connection between the people who live in Granite Point and the prospective development, so I don't have anything else that's like really fancy or eloquent to say, but I just say, like want to, want you to know how many people are, talk about this every day, you're seeing like a few people who are comfortable enough to come forward and speak, but they're, these are like, this is, this is dinnertime conversation every night in Rosemont. Is is this topic?
Thank you.
And almost every, like I can't think of a household who, I haven't spoken with my name, who's not discussing this on a regular basis and is really, doesn't trust Council to to hold this. So that's why I'm here before you today, just to to let you know that people are really concerned about four point nine and we we trust, we entrust you uh with the future of of this process and we hope that it can truly remain a live document um and reflect the the current needs of the community.
Do I have any other speakers?
I'm Mayor Morrison and Council, my name is Dale Butterfield, I live at eight oh six Victoria Street. Uh I'm born and raised in Nelson, I'm the third generation. I've seen a lot of changes uh in this town in my life, a lot of them positive. Um I feel like this is taking the city in a direction that is gonna make it really challenging for the local businesses to continue to survive and prosper. I know a lot of uh business owners right now that find it hard to simply hire staff and pay them a wage that they can afford uh to live here or even to find a place. Um the developers uh on their website say that they are uh gonna build a luxury resort on par with the uh greatest resorts in the world, which means, you know, they're going for billionaires and multimillionaires. I think the commercial hub is gonna reflect that type of clientele, which is just gonna put further pressure from there to the surrounding areas and all throughout the city. So I think uh four point nine needs to be reevaluated and uh it's considered removing. Thank you.
Okay, I'm go, no, I'm going, John, you're gonna have to wait one. Pink shirt, please come. Come here, come in, so yeah, there you go.
Hello, thank you guys for giving me this opportunity to speak. Hi, I'm Mayor and Council, my name is Gala Raffo, I live on Creek Street and I was born here and raised in Nelson. I'm strongly against section four point nine of the O C P and request that it is to be removed. This will inevitably cause a skyrocket in the housing market, which will make it quite nearly impossible for me and the younger generation to stay in our hometown. That is all, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, John, Alton, you can jump up.
Mayor Morrison and Council, um yeah, I feel strongly about this and I think, how can we avoid this in the future through the O C, O C P or some other mechanism that we can have control over what development happens in Nelson? And somebody else mentioned there is other like high-end developments that aren't really gonna serve, in my mind, what we need here, people to move here, raise families, work, have jobs, be part of the community, um and not high-end developers. Um so how could this happen? I know Whistler, they developed Housing Authority where that thing really, the Housing Authority really could deal with developers in a really strong way. And when we say we're requirements for affordable housing, I think that's way too, you know, uh soft. How, you know, that can be anything. Like how can we develop some kind of concrete way that we get what we want? We get truly, you know, affordable subsidized housing, that's what is needed here in this town.
Asking for anyone else that would like to come forward to speak? Okay, here we go, come on up.
Okay, Mayor and Council, um my name is Margie Hills and I live at sixteen oh eight Crease Avenue in Nelson, in Rosemont. And I've lived there for twenty-eight years, I've raised my two children there. Um and I love that neighborhood. It's it's, I love the golf course, I love the trails, it's beautiful. Um but I am strongly opposed to what's what's taking shape there and what's being proposed. Um I went to the community meetings or I tried to and and it was already a done deal, there was actually no opportunity to speak and um I just felt like we were silenced. And I know many people in the neighborhood, I don't know one person that is interested in having this development, like not one person. Um so I am also asking that Council and Mayor, please remove this from the O C P and do the right thing. Um the people here, we don't want it, we just don't want it. And I speak for my neighbors uh that can't be here tonight and they have sent letters in. I think Stevland addressed that beautifully and we don't want it, that's it. Thank you.
Asking again for anyone else in the room that wishes to come forward? Am I seeing somebody in yellow? Oh no, they're escaping. Am I seeing somebody and yell? Oh no, they're skipping out the door. Just in case you think I'm not watching the room. Okay, I have a hand, um.
Can I have a second round? Just you very short.
No. No, sorry Kim, but somebody, did I see a hand at the back corner? Okay, okay, so now my rule sheet says. Are there any further speakers? Going once, are there any further speakers going twice? Are there any further?
I just forgot to mention, I think that I my address is uh one twenty one West Richards.
I think when you signed in, we have your address.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Um so and for a third time, any further speakers? Seeing none. Please counting to ten, I now declare the public hearing closed. So I really wanna thank you all for coming out and um and for those that are always brave enough to come forward and speak and thank you for the majority, just remembering to keep the respect in the in the room and not clapping and cheering too much, so thank you again for that, it's always um a challenge. So um thank you for the respect that you showed to all the um speakers in the room tonight. And so what um happens now, the public hearing is um closed. Um council is gonna um have a bite to eat and the regular scheduled meeting starts at seven and at seven o'clock, the council will be doing the last final debate regarding the readings, the third and final readings of the um O C P at that time and the and the zoning um change, um the housekeeping zoning change. And so that's just how how it now goes, that's the next step in the in this public hearing process. And so um you can all, I don't think you wanna stay for the next forty five minutes, but you're all welcome to come back at seven. Have we fixed the streaming issue?
Yes, we've been streaming for the last hour when Dylan showed up.
Okay, so this means that if you did want to go home, you would be able to turn us on from the comfort of your own home and watch the debate at um seven o'clock. So you have some options in front of you. I do ask that you do not engage with the counselors um as you leave the room, if you leave or if you stay, not to engage with counselors. We cannot um at this junction um have any more information given to us, okay? You can't give information to one counselor that every counselor isn't privy to. So that's why the public portion is closed. So just so you understand, it's quite sort of dogmatic and rule laden, but these are the rules around this to make sure that these decisions are all equitable.
Can I just ask a question? You're gonna debate and then is a decision made on the O C P tonight?
Yes, yeah, tonight, the decision has to be made. We've heard the public hearing, we can't wait till next week or next month. We go right into, this is it, we've now gotten letters, we've heard from the public, we've debated this for at first and second reading, we've been here for two years getting updates. Tonight will be the night that we make the decision.
And it's open to the public?
It's open to the public, you can come back at seven or like I say, we've got the streaming port fixed where you could watch from home. So I encourage people to choose whatever whatever they wish at this at this junction, so. But thank you very much for coming to this very important meeting.
Thank you everybody and welcome back to the Tuesday, September ninth, regular meeting of council. You've got the mood lighting right?
Sorry, sorry.
Sorry?
Where's that going?
So we would like to acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the traditional territory of the Tnaaha, the Sylks and the Snikes people. And it's home to the Meti and many diverse Aboriginal persons. We honor their connection to the land of rivers and respect the importance of the environment to our strength as a community. I do have the introduction of one late item. And that's to add accounts payable, which you will have all received by email to eleven A on the agenda under reports. That's the accounts payable for this period. So I don't believe there's any other late items or changes. So if I could have an adoption of the agenda as amended, moved by Council Woodward, second by Council Lockenberg. All those in favor and that's carried. Item number five, the adoption of the regular minutes of the July eighth and August nineteenth. Anybody see any errors or omissions? Moved by Council Woodward, second by-
No, I had, sorry, errors or omissions, yes. Okay, going for that one first.
Should we just move it second and then?
Yeah, we can move in second and then, okay, Council Woodward, Counselor Page and Counselor Payne.
Um, so number twenty, twenty-five slash fifteen forty-eight, the land-based lease. It mentioned Counselor Woodward moving and it mentioned it was seconded by Counselor Payne, Page. It was, that was not correct. It was seconded by myself, Counselor Payne.
Okay. But meeting was that, Counselor?
Oh, sorry, um.
July eleventh?
It's in September nine.
July eighth or the August nineteenth?
That's today. Hold on, I'm loading. Well, the one where we did the land-based lease.
Land-based lease?
The first, it was the July, July, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Got it here. And I, I am aware that you can second motion and then vote against it. But I thought would be rare to do that.
No, that's not rare. Sometimes people put stuff on the floor to have a debate and-
Okay.
It goes down in flames. Yeah, that was the second motion, Counselor Payne, under the land, land lease.
Well, the one that was moved by Counselor Woodward and it says seconded by Counselor Tate.
No.
Counselor Page.
And that's eight eighteen and eight twenty-four?
Eight, eight eighteen to eight twenty-four.
Oh, right here. Yeah, you got it.
Okay.
Thank you. I, I went back and looked at the video. I can tell you the time on the video if you want to bear with it.
Oh, I got it.
Okay, any other errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor and that carries, thank you. City manager, is there anything you have to?
No, I've been away just to, just to let people know. We have a new bylaw manager that should start in the beginning of October. So I think that's, they're just finalizing the contract, but person's verbally accepted at this stage. So that's good news. We have the capital project manager out for Chris Johnson identified that lease and have a member of the candidates so far for that. That's positive. Uh, we're interviewing for the deputy chief next week, I believe.
Of fire.
Of fire.
Deputy chief of fire, of fire.
Yes. Yeah, I'll be clear on that. So yeah, so that's, yeah, positive as well.
Okay, council reports or council questions, Council Shane.
Um, in the meetings from July, I was talking about the leasing policy for the Civic Center because it was sort of a hot property. If we made any progress on that or just start looking for additions.
The Civic Center.
The Civic Center.
Dance and Brawls, please? Yeah.
It said Civic Center, but okay, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, um, I think there's a draft. We're meeting as well to talk about it. Yeah, we'll bring that back. I think really what we're looking at is trying to develop a scoring matrix that recognizes, you know, I think we want to look at, you know, how do we best utilize those facilities, how they're available broadly, those type of values is, is sort of the, what we've heard from council and, and so that's what we're gonna try to incorporate into that, you know. You know, I think ultimately we need to sort of have some discussion around are these five years and, you know, and do they come back up and do we bring, put them back out to communities so we can get others. So I think those are favorite discussions. We've just seemed to have rolled these over for three days with the same tenants, has some value, but anyway, just brought up all that sort of discussion. So don't think we're gonna solve all that at this stage, but at least setting criteria around what kind of tenants we're looking for in those. So that's, that's what we're.
Just, I haven't, I didn't see it in the, I'm very excited that the transit exchanges, functioning, operational, bench, benches, whatever the lean-to things are called, there must be an official name for them. What?
Stand-up benches, apparently.
That's not an English thing. No, we just need to not make up words. Let's give it another name.
Stand-up chair.
We have stand-up.
I'm sure there's a name. I will find out what it is. Do we have any idea there will be a grand opening, I'm presuming? We just don't have a date yet.
Yeah, we have, I think we have a meeting with those guys, what, two, one?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll try and-
This week, yeah.
Well, that was the meeting, okay.
Well, we have a meeting.
Yeah, we internally, just, just, and we'll sort of, we'll see if the DC Transit will, would want to be-
Could have saw something on the area meetings letter, soon there was a meeting.
Steer, steering that one, so.
Okay, just curious, 'cause, you know, I'm excited to be there. I'll be very regular. And then the other, the third thing that I'm just interested in, um, I don't know if this is the right place, but around water restrictions. I think it's interesting that you can fill your pool on level two water restrictions. I don't think there's a lot of people in Nelson that have pools, but, and I did look at the water restriction with some other communities. In light of the changing environment we find ourselves in, is that something that we should be reviewing? Or is that information just passed to us from some legislation, legislative framework?
I would say probably built on somebody else's policy way, way back when we could look at that. I don't, yeah, probably a legacy thing.
Yeah, 'cause the, the concept of watering lawns these days, I feel is also somewhat, I don't know what the word would be for that, but it may be from a, a time past that we can water lawns when we get to past regular.
Yeah, and I think there's balance that we don't wanna dry everything out in our, in our community that we are more prone to, to wildfire or starting fires, so.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, I think all of those, let's try to find those balances.
But yeah, I think those are, are things we can look at. We certainly want to maintain our, the health of our trees and our, our vegetable gardens and the ability to have water for housing fires and, and all of those things. But there are certain things that, you know, there's other ways to go. We know zero scape and and different water, better utilization of water ground covers that we could use. And I, I think we're noticing that we're moving into an environment where that's gonna be really important for us.
Yeah, I don't know.
So I, I think it's worth examining, is all I'm trying to say. I don't know when those things come around for review, if they do, but.
Yeah, I don't know if that came up through Nelson Next or OCP or any of that, any discussion around landscaping and things through the OCP process.
Do you see anything on zero scape in OCP?
Not on, not on the OCP, but as part of the zoning bylaw review, we are gonna be looking at the landscaping.
Yeah, yeah, so I think those things will be updated in light of the environment we find ourselves in. Okay, I just wanted to mention that because water, it's important.
Well, I think, you know, as we saw how quickly things can change, we had a smoke pre-summer pretty well and, you know, a lot of fires across the province and one weekend changed dramatically with one storm, right?
Um, any other further questions for the city manager?
I do.
Yeah.
But it might be for GM.
Well, okay.
So does GM have a report as well?
GM, do you want to give a report if you've got one and then otherwise take a question?
Uh, I'm happy to take a question. You know, I can usually try to provide a bit of an operations update at this point, operations from an operations perspective. Very much sort of, uh, you know, the big thrust of, of effort, it happened sort of spring, early summer. We had the crews available to finish that work off, kept them on to maintain for, you know, sort of the last couple of big weekends in Nelson here with Pride and, um, uh, the car show. And, you know, now looking to, you know, as my, the director of, you know, school operations said, he's already in winter in his mind, so, you know, getting all of that prep done, ready to go. So from a crew's perspective, see a lot of that, there's some of the, the small things that, you know, we weren't able to get to in the summer that we're working on now, um, painting railings, doing stuff like that. Seen a lot of work around town in general with painting of the hydrants, um, you know, generally getting around to some of those odd jobs that it, that it's, uh, you know, you try to get to. Couple of years ago, we redid all the benches downtown, that type of thing, right? So, yeah, um, just in, so basic, in summation, transition season, um, looking at that now. Happy to answer any questions.
Sure, thanks, through the chair. Um, any update on the, what's happening with regards to the Anderson Creek dry out incident? Um, and I'm, I'm actually really interested just from a policy perspective, what kind of investigations come forward? Or how do, how do the provincial and federal regulations impact what happens next for us?
Yeah, so, um, you know, uh, staff are working through all of that right now. It's, you know, first time we've done this type, or this type of thing has happened. So, um, you know, what I can say is that, you know, when it occurred, staff did contact the, well, we contacted our biologist who recommended the best course of action was to contact the RAP line. And that would go to the provincial authorities who then are the ones that move it up to the federal level if required. So they navigate that process. So we were in touch with, um, you know, we reported to the RAP line, talked to the conservation service or left messages there. You know, it was during a, a long weekend there, so bit challenging. Uh, but, so once it was reported, um, understanding that there would be follow-up from that and, you know, we're still waiting for some of that, we also wanted to understand, 'cause it was an odd thing that happened, right? So, uh, I guess a summation would be that, you know, we had the repairs, you read in the paper and, and emails that we sent out. When we pulled from Anderson Creek, there was still water, a good amount of water flowing downstream Anderson. And even at Ninth Street, there was still water flowing and then somewhere there, it just went subsurface and went dry for a few blocks and then downstream of that, uh, the water showed up again, so.
Really, in the middle?
Yeah, yeah, it was in the middle, yeah. So, um, you know, it was maintained, uh, lower down. That's what, um, I know that, you know, I saw the night that I heard about this and went out and had a look. Uh, we had a, a biologist walk up the, the stream bed, um, doing an assessment for us on what happened. And her findings were consistent with what we had observed. We currently, you know, one of the, the big surprises to us is that we had fish higher up in the reaches there. And so, uh, we have, or biologists on our behalf have an application in to do a fish survey in there, so we get a better understanding. So we'll be pursuing that. So we really want to try and understand, you know, why did the water go subsurface? Is that an issue? Did it go subsurface? You know, are there outtakes along there that may or may not be licensed from? You know, there's a lot of homes through there. Uh, could that have been part of the, the challenge? So these are all the things that we're trying to work through now. I mean, the ultimate goal is first and foremost for this not to happen again. And to do that, you really need to understand what happened. So we're pursuing that now. And, and so that we can, I mean, you know, it's just gonna happen that we're going to have to do repairs again. And repairs are done during low water, so, um, you know, it, that's, can be challenging. Um, and we just want to, yeah, uh, learn as much as we can about the system so that we can do better. Um and we just want to, yeah, uh learn as much as we can about the system so that we can do better, uh. You know, we were quite surprised by the outcome this time around.
Thank you.
Any further questions for either the GM or the CAO? Okay. Mr. Jerry, did you have anything?
We're um gearing up for full budget. Process now, um Nelson Hydro's first in line, of course, and we've got their. Open house, I think, I should have the date here.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, thank you. Um so we're kinda working through that process, uh but also water, waste water and resource recovery, building next. I think some calendar pieces have gone out for you folks as well, so check your calendars and hopefully those dates work for you.
Counselor Payne?
Um I I sent it to um CFO Jerry this afternoon, but Cranbrook has just, well, they released it on September second, their budget survey. And I just think it's a really interesting um. Tool for us to consider, to get public input prior to the budget, to have a better gauge of what people are willing to. I guess which services are the most important, what they're willing to pay for those services, helping them understand um large capital expenditures that are coming forward. So I'd like to see that at some point in time, that we can do something, even if it's just a simple. You know, five question starter. And I think it would be a great educational piece for um citizens to residents to understand where we are spending our money. And why these um increases are coming along, I was mentioning that we just sat down and did our. Uh whole household budget update with the taxpayer, um. Taxes monthly and our hydro monthly, and you know, all of these amounts are going up. Uh and it's beyond the the cost of living, so I I think the more we have people. With a good understanding and feeling that they have some choices and inputs on where that process is going. The easier it's gonna be to move forward, so something I suggest that we incorporate at some point in the future.
Yeah, no, thank you for sending that my way, I think I'd seen that one last year as well, but Cranbrook does, yeah.
Yeah, I sent it last year too.
Engagement tool that they put out, um it's really sort of like a pulse check on how folks are feeling about different services that they receive. Uh we did have a meeting and talked about that internally, uh you know, maybe, I don't know, a month ago, um. Just timing wise, I think September probably works, you wanna do it early enough that. Um I mean, you don't wanna do it before property taxes, cuz then people get a bit confused, are you talking about this year or next year, so I think sort of late summer.
Yeah.
September works. We were concerned this year with. Um you know, with the OCP engagement, the liquid waste management plan, with all these things that are, were really hitting the public heavy this year to add. Another new one to them and have our comms team try and stick and handle that around all the other communications that are going out there that. Maybe it's something we work towards doing for twenty twenty-six, when it's not such a heavy year, but I I do like the concept and we'll definitely look at it a little further.
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions for staff? Um councillors, any reports? Councillor Page, then Councillor Payne.
Uh more of a report next time we were done, or, but I will note that at this morning's park commission, um the commission has agreed to. Increase an allocation or to allocate the surplus that it set aside for municipal services in the tune of forty-one thousand dollars. Uh roughly about five hundred of that to go to Salmo and and the remainder to come to Nelson, uh to. Uh adjust for the inflationary increase on operating costs within our park service, uh that are regional parks. So that'll go to board before next Thursday, and it'll be for the twenty twenty-five year. And then the expectation is in on November tenth, uh that any additional budgetary asks that come from the city or or from. Uh from Salmo, uh will come forward there for that, for consideration for twenty twenty-six.
Great, anything else?
Nope.
So you wanna have from the city, if you've got an ask in front of the November tenth. Park meeting.
Yeah, so that's, that would be the expectations, that November tenth will receive any additional ask for the twenty twenty-six budget. At that meeting, since staff will certainly be in touch, I'm sure.
Thank you. Councillor Payne?
Um August twenty-second uh was uh an amazing, and I'm still thinking of it in my head as Market Fest. Even though we're, it's more to night market, because it just seems like a festival. With everybody in the street, the street was packed, the weather was perfect, the entertainment, the energy, the food, wow. Hit it out of the park, so thank you to staff, participants, um vendors, entertainers. Really an amazing event that showcased our community to uh tourists and residents alike, of how you can have. So much fun in such a uh collaborative, connected way. I had a good time. Um just going right along, and then we moved the next weekend into Pride Week, so on the twenty-fifth, the Monday, was the. Flag raising for Pride, right out in front here, always a beautiful event as that flag goes up. And then that week, uh I'll say culminated, although I think there were one or two events afterwards with the parade on uh the Sunday, the thirty-first. Leave that one, Sunday was the thirty-first. Uh started as usual at Wildflower School and and looped around a few places before it stopped at. Uh Falls Street, and then people made their way over to Cottonwood, where the uh lively festivities just continued. Uh well into the evening, uh with a lot of enthusiasm, it was a beautiful event, and there were. Um many, many more volunteers than I had ever experienced as a parade marshal. Uh in lieu of having a a police presence, and I think it worked out really, really well with what they were calling us instead of parade marshals, the the peace force. So uh we managed to get everybody where they needed to go, it was a lot of fun. And I assume the mayor's gonna talk about her participation in that. Uh in between those two events, um August twenty-eighth marks the. Uh International Overdose Awareness Day, and an event was held down at Lakeside Park. Uh there were seventy-five people in attendance, thirteen people with lived experience, twelve partner organizations came in and either tabled or or presented. And twenty-five maloxum kits were given out at that event. Well, well attended, grows every year and very important to mark that occasion, I'm sure everybody saw the article in the newspaper. Uh similar events were held in Casagar Trail and Grand Forks, so it's um, you know, it's something that's supported right throughout the region. On um Saturday night, I went to the Hume for a sold a packed house when they showed the movie Trouble in the Headwaters. So the West Cootney Watershed Collaborative um brought that film in. Uh with a panel to talk about it, and it was just a short documentary, about thirty minutes on um. The Grand Forks flooding and how now there's just more concrete information that the. Deforestation in certain areas had contributed to that and what the consequences of that are. Um Dr. Yunus Alila uh spoke there, and he also did a a separate session the following day on. The research that he's been doing for twenty years about, it's not just forestry, it's where the clear cuts are and how it's tied to geography, it was. Pretty fascinating, I can't say that I completely understand it, but I was glad that I got there to know that he's doing that work and somebody out there is. Following along as we um work towards balancing the needs of forestry and our watersheds in British Columbia. And then the the next fun event I had was I took my grandson for the first time to the running of the Redfish. Which has always been an annual event for our family, because I I just don't know anywhere that there's anything like that, and they start out. Um you know, relatively relaxed with the day we went, there were lots of school groups there, talking to um. Joanne Sedaris, who always had, is a, an amazing source of information, and the other rangers showing us uh. What those redfish are doing, why they're there, and there's the obligatory closing off of one pathway because the bear is feeding over there this morning, so. That was what was happening in Nelson for me this week, and tomorrow I am headed off with a number of individuals to. The Active Transportation Conference in Kimberly, which is the first time that that event has been held outside of the lower mainland. And to encourage participants from our area to go, the Columbia Basin Trust funded up to seventy-five percent of your registration fee. So it's really an amazing opportunity for us to um have that caliber of program here. In what we know is a a great location, so I'm looking forward to that, we'll tell you all about it next time.
Councillors, anybody else have anything? Councillor Lockwood?
Just one, one thing, um I wanna thank um Minister Anderson, Brittany Anderson, for, once again, leveraging her. Position in cabinet to attract MLAs and ministers to the region, to show them around and really give us a chance. I think many of us in council had a chance to meet with these ministers and MLAs and advocate for Nelson and regional priorities. Um one in particular, George Anderson, is the MLA and Parliamentary Secretary for Transit. Um was here, and we got a chance to spend about an hour and a half with them. Touring around our new transit exchange, really talking about the West Cootney Transit System and how it's different from an urban system. And uh it was great, because he he spoke back to me, the arguments we were making, and said that he would take them on to the. Minister into cabinet, and so um I think uh, you know, we continue to um work hard to build a more robust. Regional transit system.
Did you ride the bus?
Is that?
Did you ride the bus?
No, we walked.
Okay.
We just walked. Yeah, he's active. Active.
No, it was great, it was great to meet um MLA Anderson, um George, that is, the George Anderson, like all these.
George.
Too many names are the same, that uh, and it was great that he was able to spend some time in town and was able to see the new um transit, and he thought it was. He thought it was beautiful, I mean, we had a nice chat about that, and then uh um I think MLA Morissette was here, who's the Minister of State for. Um Rural Affairs, and then we had Bowen Ma, the Minister of Infrastructure, and on that note, um I did attend, um as. As Minister Ma was here to open the new um Fairview Gardens and the Nelson Health Campus uh last week. So I did attend that, as did um the city manager. And I've been assured that um there will be uh open house and opportunity for residents of Nelson to attend, as there were none. Um at this official opening, which was a bit um disappointing, but uh so the grand opening has happened, and like I say. Been assured within the next uh two to three weeks, there will be opportunity for Nelson residents, many of whom are. Old employees of Mount St. Francis and longstanding Nelson families who've had loved ones. Um live and pass away at the old mount, that there's a lot of meaning to that uh land up there for our um community, so. I do encourage people to watch for that, I will be definitely keeping an eye out for that um opportunity in the. In the future, it it is an absolutely beautiful facility, it's gonna be a facility that. Um hopefully will serve our community for quite a number of years um going, going forward, so. And um as Councillor Payne mentioned, I think I was at everything that Councillor Payne's been at, except for the Hume Hotel, because I can't stay up that late. Um and uh Pride was great, I wanna thank um councillors, um Paige and Tate and Woodward. Who have always come along to help hand out the candy from the, we took the little E V Max. It was way cooler to decorate.
Yeah.
Um for the um parade, and I wanna thank uh Councillor Tate for bringing her three young children along. Who were really the best candy givers out, or I'm not too sure about the adults, they, they were okay, they were, they were chatting, but the. The young ones, they were very good at getting the 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 candy out, so um it was a a very lovely time, and I was, of course, at the International overdose awareness day in the park, and. It's always a solemn time, but it's a time for people to get together and and know that um. The community stands with them in their, in their grief, and that we continue to work forward to make. To make Nelson a, you know what, a better place for for everyone, so. Um and last week I was in Vancouver um at a very interesting um. Conference called, and I'm just gonna read it to you because it's really long. Countering online harms in British Columbia, the role of municipalities in preventing and responding to online threats to social cohesion. It's a very um interesting um couple of days, and I will do a more fulsome report, and I've now, that. This is a two-year project going forward, so there is some um ask for further engagement from. Um participants and from municipalities, so I will bring it up with staff as to whether or not we want to engage um any further, but it was. I have to say, a very eye-opening experience for someone who doesn't use social media, and probably, and doesn't have children. Or grandchildren, um it's, it's quite amazing what evil lurks out there, for lack of a better way to put it. So anyways, that was uh, yeah, that was a trip I I wasn't gonna go, and then I thought, you know what, this is, I need to challenge myself in terms of. Not having experience in this area, and it was definitely um worthwhile endeavor, so. Um and moving on then, we are at the bylaw part, so here we are, the official community plan. Item nine A. So following a two-year update and engagement process, staff have prepared official community plan bylaw number three six two nine twenty twenty-five. To replace the current official community plan. Council passed first and second reading of the bylaw on August nineteenth, and directed staff to hold a public meeting on September ninth. Several minor modifications proposed by council at the August eighteenth meeting have since been made to the proposed bylaw, and the public hearing has occurred. And council is now being asked to pass third reading and adoption of the official community plan bylaw. So we have, again, in our packages, a lot of information, we've got copies, like everybody's got their own copy of the OCP. And we also have staff in the room to answer any questions, so at this point. I'll um either look at an opportunity if someone would like to move. Um one of the resolutions, or if you have questions for staff before we move any resolutions. Councillor Page?
We started, question for staff, with the chair. If we were to contemplate the striking of four point nine, the Granite Point neighborhood golf uh items that have been incorporated into the this OCP. Could we strike that and send that back to be redeveloped or will it be put in by itself? Or or what consequences would that create?
For sure, and I think uh the recommendation to council would be to approve the OCP as it stands, and then. Uh pass a separate motion for staff to investigate the legal aspects of that. Because it's not just a matter of what we're doing, it's also thinking about what it is to be replaced by, because uh from a legal standpoint, we have to have. A land use designation for that property and policies that fight of that property, so we need some time to think about that. And on the legal aspect, uh.
Can I, sorry, can I just stop you for a second? Okay, because of the technical issues, because we're gonna start hearing from people who are probably trying to stream. The regular meeting, because of the technical errors, we left it set up. For the stream under the public hearing, so if you're on the city webpage, you need to go to public hearing. Not to the regular meeting to see this meeting being held.
But you won't hear.
We can't hear that, so how do we communicate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we could try and switch over, there's, so the way that it presents on the um screen is.
So.
That you have your choice of the two different things, so hopefully people will try the public hearing, thinking that it's. Um but the one isn't working, to try the other, the other option would be for us to um. To stop streaming here, try and stream on the other one with the possibility of it not streaming anywhere. The plan that IT has is to um stitch the two together, because there's. Because it's, it's not interactive, I guess, I T will stitch the, the videos together and, and make it. Sort of all work tomorrow morning when they're in, so people will be able to watch it, cause it, so it is being recorded. It's just they won't be able to watch it live.
Can we post on Facebook, et cetera?
Um.
Well, as the YouTube lands where it needs to land, makes sense to me, right, like YouTube.
It'll be there tomorrow.
Will be there tomorrow when they're ready and, and they'll be rolling.
Yes. Yes. So it's all being recorded right now and we aren't gonna mess with it because it's working, yeah, I get that.
Yeah.
And it's being recorded and it'll be available tomorrow under the appropriate link, currently it's being recorded. Or sorry, it's being streamed under the public hearing link, as opposed to the regular meeting link.
And there's no way for us to communicate that to the public.
We can do it on Facebook.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I personally would be very frustrated if I was, if I'd come to this meeting and then I. Was said I could go home and stream it and then I got home and could not access it. Especially in light of what we heard of so many people feeling, you know, concerns.
Right. I just wanna say that if you were to go to the City of Nelson's YouTube in general, like it's the most prominent thing happening, cause it's active and it's happening.
Okay.
Right, like it's not, it just says public hearing and it's live, we're still live.
So, streaming, I'm just gonna Google streaming, City of Nelson Council, right?
Thank you, this, this is just one of those things where we can see how, you know, the advent of technology where this would have never occurred. Um, years ago. But uh, now, now we have all this technology and sometimes it's a challenge.
Um, are um Communications Coordinators going to put that on Facebook?
Yeah, yeah.
And yeah, as well, so I did just Google um stream Nelson City Council meeting. And the second option was YouTube and it's, so the first option is Mayor and Council Nelson B C section. Second option is City of Nelson YouTube, you click on that and then it goes immediately, says the one that's live, which is this one.
Yep. So it's there, for someone it'll be frustrating.
Understood, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I have a question.
Yes.
We were meant, we were meant to answer one.
Yeah. But we haven't anything yet, Kevin, wait, cause, cause I just stopped the, cause we had a question, so I was taking questions first, so.
You just asked a question.
So now we're back.
So, um, Ken.
Granite Point, yes, okay, um, so to, to Counselor Page's question, staff's recommendation would be to approve the O C P. Um, as it stands, and then if they so desire to pass a separate motion for us to investigate the legal and administrative. Consequences of changing that section, so um. And as I was, as I was mentioning before, it's not just a matter of removing a section, we also have to think about. What is it gonna be replaced by, and because it's such a huge section. Um, not just section four point nine, but it's also referenced in the land use chart as well. We'd wanna have a look and see what the potential consequences are, particularly in light of the fact that it's not a section that. Um, has changed, it's something that an applicant did apply for and will get approval from a council on. So we need to think about, you know, is there statutes or a sta- um. Um, statute of limitations on when we can make changes after uh an application has been approved by council. So we don't know that at the moment, because of there's been so many changes from the province when it comes to land use and development. We just would want some time to have a look at that, so that's why we're sort of recommending that you move forward with the O C P as it stands and if you so desire. Pass a separate motion for us to look into this, so we can come back with a report.
Supplemental, Counselor Page.
A supplemental worry, and we'll see how we can address it, is. When we start with something restrictive and we get more expansive as we've gone in this direction versus now we're in an expansive state and we're hearing from a big, you know. Presence within the community itself, that would like us to revert back to something uh more simplistic, but certainly would like to have a more. Uh, have another engagement around planning, is how do we. Guard against the situation where we're in this expansive state, where we're in this contemplative, what could we, what shouldn't we, should we reopen? Like I'm worried about adopting this further, uh without that opportunity to go to community and see if this is actually, will this neighborhood plan come out quite different? Uh, and, and have something go through in the interim, like how long will we be sitting in an example of, of providing vision?
I just. There's, this developer does not have zoning to do. Do anything, so there's no urgency to, you know, there's no development application. The person does not have zoning to do other than the first units, which have already been approved, so those can't be reversed.
Yeah.
So, so I, you know, I, I guess that's the main point, there's, there's no. Way for that developer to move forward with some of these plans, they happen, when you read the O C P. Some, some of the visions this developer have, don't pay with the O C P, you know, it talks about seniors housing, affordable housing and residential and. You know, that commercial zone is, it's for the Rosemont neighborhood, it's, has to fit with the downtown, there's. There's a lot of policy in the current four point nine that are way against what this developer thinks. Or has a vision for it, so, so even the O C P doesn't support what they have, let alone the land's not rezoned, so. There's no, no fear that you go ahead with a development that. There's a whole bunch of process, even under the current O C P, so there's time to, you know, to look at this, if that's the desire of council, there's. You know, there's no risk of some large development that this particular developer has, has communicated out there, it. Doesn't fit right now and he has no zoning, so there's, there's no risk at this time and there's time to do this properly.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm just gonna have Natalie talk, maybe finish off this thought, cause she has her hand up, and then I'm coming to Counselor Penaro.
I just wanted to point out, sorry through the chair, that um the current O C P has the exact policies in it. Um, we just carried those over into the draft, so postponing the adoption of the O C P, it, it doesn't change anything, the same policies are under twenty thirteen. So, I don't know if that helps.
That's.
Yeah.
Good.
Counselor Woodburn, no, wait, no, sorry, Counselor Penaro, then Counselor Woodburn, sorry.
I think I almost answered that question for me, I, what I, what I'm interested in is. I mean, I, I, I hear you, Kevin, in the sense that, you know, the zoning isn't there yet. And this isn't a done deal and there's lots of mechanisms by which it, you know, has to stand up to the overall strategy and, and vision. What I'm worried about in this O C P and why I don't really, I would want, I, I kinda wanna get this dealt with first if, you know, I. Um, is that, there's obviously some language in there that's. These like vague enough that somebody like this developer can read it and think that they have. A case for what they're doing, um, and that, and that worries me and I think maybe we need to adjust that language. Because this is, I think we're in a situation where, you know, whether it's. This particular development or development that's coming, or you know, more in the future, I think this is gonna happen again. And I, and I, and it's clearly uh what I heard, you know, today, but definitely not only today, is that. The majority of people here don't want that, and so I think it's our responsibility to make it as. As foolproof as possible and, and, and whatever it is now. Clearly didn't give that impression to the developer that's, that's gone as far as they have with what they're doing, so. I would like to see some way of, of making that a little bit more precise and a little bit more restrictive. So that we avoid these situations in the future and I don't know, I mean, I imagine we're under some sort of deadline, but. At the same time, like working within those deadlines and then trying to find a way to minimize that uh. The potentiality for, for these sorts of misunderstandings.
My experience is developers will interpret things.
I, I realize that.
Their vision and our staff, they, no, that's not what it says and, and we don't control that, but probably can't speak to that.
And, and something that we, maybe Natalie and I missed previously as well is, we have to keep in mind the fact that we've sent this O C P out to. Many different external organizations, including First Nations, and they were presented a, a version of the plan. That has the Granite Point section as it is, if we're to make changes after the fact, um. I think that could potentially be damaging to our relationships with those external organizations, simply because we presented something to them. It's then been changed without consulting with them, so I think that's why Natalie and I are recommending. That if council does wish to have us look at that Granite Point section, that a separate motion is passed, so that we can then. Consult with the Sinaics uh, or the Yakonuki and Interior Health and the Regional District and so on and so forth and say, what do you think? In some cases, they might say, we don't really, doesn't really matter to us, in other cases, they may have a great interest in that.
Counselor Woodward then, Counselor Lockberg then Counselor Payne.
Thank you, um, thank you Mayor, uh, I, I feel like uh, you know. What I'm seeing here, I have, I have the O C P up, um, and what you're talking about, how it was in the last O C P. Um, really, I just feel like we need to communicate to the public about what we're talking about. I, like, I don't know if it's an article that is written by the city for the paper, but just outlining this very clearly that there are many. Um, places to pump brakes along the path here and um, and then it's not just um. It's not just what people feared, which I think there's, there was definitely like a sense of like, uh, we're becoming canmore or, or something like that, or this, this will, this. One development will uh throw us over that, that line into like a whistler or something, but obviously there's a. Whole bunch of movements um that have to happen before anything, anything like that ever happens. So I just kinda feel like there needs to be some kind of level of communication to the public that, around this issue, cause obviously this is a hot, hot button issue. People are very concerned and I get it, you know, change is hard, um, development in small towns is challenging. But um, I think it's almost like people um. You know, just locked into one piece of this entire O, O C P process and really focused on that. Uh, so maybe we just need to communicate a little more clearly from us to the community that this is, this is actually what's happening. There are many places to stay stopped, it's a long road moving forward, so I just, that's my suggestion. Better, better communication around this particular section. But ju- but we do need to move it forward, I get that, we need to keep moving forward here, it's been two and a half years.
Counselor Lockenberg, Payne, then go around.
I just feel like we've moved into debates, probably should move the.
Oh.
No.
It hasn't been.
Unless there's another question.
It's not on the table yet.
Okay.
There's nothing on the table, so.
So I'll make a.
We're gonna move.
I'll make a motion. Um, to uh, adopt the, yes, yeah.
So I'd like to. Make a change after, yeah.
After reading.
Yeah.
So I can make it, I'm good to make it, okay. Um, so I've emailed council with a slight change to four point nine, but um, I think you've got it too. So you know what I'm talking about, so if you get a second, I don't think, I was emailed.
So I think. We move it perhaps as is and then debate an amendment, just for clarity, it's probably a good idea.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, um, well, I'll move it and then make an amendment, can I amend my own motion?
Okay, it's not been seconded, so let's, let's try this all over again, I'm, I'm feeling that people would like to, nobody has any questions, we seem to be debating things. And does somebody wanna move Resolution Number One?
Open at this point.
This is third reading.
I'll move, I'll move, I'll move.
Okay.
Yeah, I need a second.
And I'll second.
Okay, that the official community, oh no, and then we can debate, sorry, my bad. Should I read it so we know what we're debating? Thank you, that the official Community Plan Bylaw number three six two nine twenty twenty-five be introduced and read. By a first time by title only, is that the right one?
Right, third time, I don't know where you're at.
I'm in the wrong, I'm in old agenda, so, sorry, by third time?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, so that's there, Counselor Lockenberg.
I would like to um propose an amendment. And that amendment.
Geez, here it is.
Is on four point nine, and it's to change the um, uh.
Hang on, sorry, just second, my brain just had a brain moment, you moved, who seconded that?
I, I was just gonna read it so you knew it to second.
No, 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 who moved, did you also second?
I seconded it, yeah.
Okay, okay, now you wanna make an amendment, okay, thank you, I just didn't, I didn't catch the seconder, I just, somebody will be watching and telling me I didn't have a seconder.
So that, that four point.
Thirty is the one you want, that's when you said it, seven thirty-two.
Yeah, the, the, the second, the second one, so that's four point nine, it's the opening paragraph, it suggests the intent. So I think the, the meat of this a- amendment, if we go, well, I'll just say it and then we can discuss, so I'll just read it out. If I can find it again. No, I, I found it, thanks, okay. So I'd like to change the language of encourage. The long-term viability of the golf course by encouraging compatible redevelopment of the site in efforts to encourage a golf-oriented. Community that is highly integrated into the city with, so I'd like to change that paragraph to. Encourage the vitality of the Rosemont neighborhood by encouraging redevelopment of the golf course in efforts to encourage a healthy and diverse community. That is highly integrated into the city with coal, so a slight shift in tone, but I think it's important.
Mm-hmm.
Um, oh wait, I should see if there's a second before I make this.
I'll, I'll second that one.
Yeah, thank you.
But, and I'd like to ask a question.
Okay, sure, so, the amendment has been moved and seconded, any debate now, at this point, will be on the amendment.
Yes.
Okay, that's where everybody's clear on that?
Yeah.
Okay, move Lockenberg, seconded Payne, Woodward has a question.
So my question is, um, does this. Uh. Does this slight change cause a, a little effect on the line that now needs to be investigated and or. Does it put us at some kind of like risk that we're, that we're stepping over the line here to something else?
Uh, just, I'm sorry, I didn't quite get a chance to write it all down, but it sounded, so no, it's all, it's all good, it sounds good.
Sorry, I'll.
What I would say is, um, it's the, the policies, so starting with four point nine point one. And going to the end of that section, and it's also the land use chart on page fifty-seven. That are the real meat of the policy, so the entire section is important, but if there is discussion about changing those two sections. The policies and then the land use chart, that would be something that we'd wanna investigate. The wording of the introductory paragraph is helpful, it does provide more clarity for staff. But I don't think there'd be an issue with uh, with changing that section from a legal perspective.
Okay.
Ken, I've just sent the proposed changes to you there, so it shouldn't.
Okay, sorry for not sending.
I don't have my email, but that's.
I can, it's.
So.
Natalie has.
I'm at, I'm, do you have something, you moved this, you have something more that you wanna say, or can I?
Yeah.
Move along my.
Well, I was.
A little bit out of sync now because my, my list of people that wanted to sp- to talk was on the main motion, but, so I'm gonna. Defer to you again for a minute, you moved this amendment, we're talking about the amendment.
Yep, so um, based on what I heard tonight, what I've heard in the past, what I'm hearing from council. It seems to me that um, what we're imagining. And, and you who have been on the O C P committee, I think can speak to this as well, what we're imagining for the Rosemont neighborhood. Is something that works to the benefit of the Rosemont neighborhood, right, like that's, that's what we're talking about, and then to the city in general. And I think the focus on the commercial or the village market or the commercial hub. Was seen as potentially a leverage point, like maybe if we interrupt that part of it, we'll interrupt the whole halo development. I don't think, and in the conversations I had, we didn't have a problem with like an uphill style market, a little thing, a little bit of. It's, it would add to the community. It's it would add to the community. Um, and I think that the people of Rosemont, just like the people of uphill, like the uphill market. Having a little bit of a commercial presence adds some diversity and interest and would help improve potentially traffic flow. Like, so rather than always having to drive, say, to town to Baker Street to do quick little errands or pick up something. You would have something more local in the neighborhood. So I I think the problem isn't the commercial hub. It's the, it's the Halo development. And so I just wanted to emphasize that. And I think by just making that tweak on that opening paragraph. Cause if if you go through each one of these items, do we want the inclusion of smart growth policies around the principles of lead or Bill Green? Yes, nobody has a problem with that. The the density on the three hundred units, it's a done deal. So there's that, it's no material to this conversation. Item after item, you go down, it's like, great, 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 great. It's the vision of Halo in general that's the problem. And in particular, that leverage was, oh, if we get that village hub or commercial hub village center. Then Halo wouldn't be able to develop. But this stresses with this um slight amendment to the language that we're doing this. For the benefits of the Rosemont neighborhood. And I just wanted to emphasize that, cause it is missing and I think that's probably an oversight. It was just, you guys just assumed. That was taken for granted, but I think being explicit here helps.
Uh, Ken, I'm gonna go to you just because you've now seen this again in writing.
I know, it looks good. I have a different comment, but it's related to sort of help wailing uh council's concerns and the public's concerns. I just wanted to actually highlight something that's gonna be discussed later, which is the Development Application Procedures Bylaw and the Development Approval. What is it called now? Development Approval Information Amendment to the Development Application Procedures Bylaw. So if that is approved by council, um, it lists a whole different. Uh, there's a whole list of different studies that the director can ask of an applicant when they apply for rezoning. And one of the things that we can now do, assuming council approves that, is the director may require that the applicant provide. Uh, Development Approval Information on and a systematic detailed assessment of. Retail trade impacts of a proposed commercial development, including but not limited to. The effects of additional competition, the effects on commercial vacancy rates and the impacts to neighborhood or sector stability. As well, the director can also ask for a report from the developer as part of rezoning. A report that outlines socioeconomic impacts affecting the day to day quality of life of people and communities. Including direct and indirect economic impacts, demographics, housing, housing impacts, including tenant relocation. Local services and socioeconomic issues. That's quite a mouthful, but these are some additional things that. The city hasn't typically asked for and it's something that we can ask for going forward. Um, with any rezoning, including anything that may happen at Granite Point.
Uh, the um, the other thing that, you know, that commercial, whatever commercial development, you know. Part of that, you know, rezone will be what type of commercial is there? Council controls that, so you can decide whether it's just a. Corner store or a, you know, what type of commercial that is. So so all of that, again. You know, I think the developer has put a vision out there that is so far from. You know, a a done deal, but you know, we have a lot of tools. So, um, you know, as the polit- or the. Sure, if it's a policy or this statement here that says, you know, that right now it says a commercial hub to include retail and studio center that supports Nelson. Artist and community in the neighborhood of Rosemont. Commercial hub will be complementary to the industry. As the commercial spine of the city. So even the that policy statement, that would say what kind of, you know. They would, our staff would would determine how, what, what fits with with. Um, supporting Baker Street and supporting the Rosemont community. Um, so all that is not defined yet.
Um, I have to go, I think, to Counsel Payne, but she may have had her question, I think it was a question pertaining to that first part now we're we're past. Okay, we're good. And then I'm going back over to Penaro and then I'm going back to.
Woodward.
So I get to go back on the list when we go through the amendment?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause, okay.
Um, I was gonna speak to the amendment.
Okay, you wanna speak to the amendment? Um, I think, I think.
Are you on the amendment?
Yeah.
On the amendment. So he's on the amendment, then what are you?
You wanna go?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Through the chair. Um, did you mean to write vitality out instead of viability? That was an intentional change or was that a type?
Yeah, it was vitality.
Vitality, okay. Interesting. Um, I think, and this riffs off what I said a couple of weeks ago, and I've been saying this, I think that. O C Ps in general, from my limited reading, uh, use a lot of vague language and. Um, the challenge there is that it can be used as leverage to, for folks to. Say, this is the thing that I want and it fits in the O C P. Look at this, look at that. Um, it's, it creates some loopholes that can be exploited. So. My understanding, and this maybe speaks to what C I O was saying, is that it's the zoning alignment with the values that is where we can um. Uh, translate into the actual buildings and the actual use that aligns with our community values. So for example, and I. I I'm guessing this is true, cause I think I've seen it in other places. You could say, okay, yes, three hundred units, but a certain percentage must be rental below market, et cetera. So I think that that's part of zoning, is that correct? And right now it's zoned as a park, correct? Yes. Okay, except for those six or twenty four or whatever it is. Okay, so. That's, uh, out of all these conversations, I think that that's the clarity that at at this table, I think that we have now. But to speak to Counselor Penaro's um challenges, I I do think that um it's worthwhile as. As a community to start to narrow down some of the vague language. The the word consider is in. A zillion policies in there and maybe some of them should should be will and force. The word encourage is even in in your rewrite and maybe it should say, uh, in efforts to. Build, build, guarantee, yeah. Because if we're just encouraging a healthy and diverse community, well, I can just stand on the street with a. Sandwich board that says be healthy and I did the job according to the O C P. So I would like to see if there's ways that we can start to to narrow that focus and to be um. More stronger in our values and stronger in the language that I use to lean into those values. So I'm curious even about the rewrite. However, the rewrite, I think, needs to be pretty close to what it was before, before we start to get ourselves into hot water, before you start to investigate things. But I am curious about as we move forward with things like zoning, I would like as a group to take out some awards like encourage and consider.
That would be O C P.
As we move forward.
Yeah, the O C P is again more general and and broader policies. That's why we use more.
Yep.
General language, the zoning and your regulations, action that and and give certainty to it. So. It's intentional to, cause there's how many goals and policies do we have? Like there's a hundred and fifty or something, so. And you don't, and you don't know what's gonna happen in the next five, ten years, so you try not to be. Super narrow in your O C P, cause you're, you know, who knows what the new invention tomorrow is.
And yet we can also amend the O C P if there's a new context tomorrow that we weren't expecting.
Yeah, well, the document is, the document is fluid, so we can always change the document.
Right.
As, as.
And so it should be written. Right, and so it should be written for our context now with the values that we have heard from our community and that we've established in our strategic plan and that we've heard through two and a half years of consultation and so on. Yeah, thanks.
Counsel Penaro.
Okay, um, some, yeah, apologize if this goes in several different directions, but on the amendment, um. I wasn't here for this, but I'm actually surprised that the O C P is, has been, has been stated. It's like. High level and and um vague. But if I'm reading this right, it said encourage the long term viability of the golf course by encouraging. Compatible redevelopment of the site in efforts to encourage, three times encouraging, a golf oriented community. That is highly integrated into the city. So. I'm surprised that if this is high level, that we're so in the weeds that we are actually encouraging golf at all. Like that's a specific thing. And do we, like, do we even do that? I mean, if the golf course was serving, was integrated into the community. It would be doing well. And if it's not doing well, it needs to find a way to integrate into the community. And be useful to the people that live in the community. And if it's not being useful to the community. What this says is that we're going to replace the community with a community that is into golf. Uh, that's how I read it, which is not, which is not.
I think that's exactly why Counsel Lockenberg has changed.
So I, I'm for, well, I'm against this being in there at all. An amendment would be amazing. Um, or striking it completely would be fine, because this is supposed to be a strategic document. It's not. Uh, like, did the golf course, the golf course didn't write it, I don't imagine. I I'm confused by that. Why it even is there in the first place. And then, um, so maybe that's a, that's a question, I guess.
Well, I can speak to it. I was in there at the time. It was driven by the golf course. So they said, we, to have a viable golf course, we need more development around and hopefully some of those people play golf. Not, nothing more than that. So it was a strategy to, in, you know, to. Um, you know, both provide additional housing, but also hopefully have more people around there. There'd be more offers. That that's, and it is, you know, I think you'll hear from our planning staff is, was a bit unusual. Having this type of language in the O C P versus uh other policies, but that was the history, why it kinda got worded that way.
Fair enough. I I I think that that it's probably unusual, cause it's not a good idea maybe and and that's potentially why we're in this situation. Because again, like, we're not, you know, I don't think the city of Nelson is. Is like married to being a golf friendly city necessarily. If nobody in town wants to play golf, then fine. You know, and if everybody wants to play golf, the golf course will do great. But I don't think we're in control of that.
No, I think again, you had a a a owner of a bunch of land. That wanted to s- you know, to see it developed in a way that both benefited the community and supported the golf course. So you had a, you know, in effect, a private landowner that wanted to see, you know, their land used in a certain way. That's, that's why.
And I, and I understand why the golf course would want the golf course to be a golf course.
At that time, supported.
But I would say that if we let things take its, their natural course and we continue to have sort of a, like, we stand back a little bit in in. And. Other things like they own the land and they'll be happy if, uh, at the end of the day, they'll be happy if it's being used in whatever way benefits them as landowners. So. If there was more housing, if there was more green space, if there was a nine hole golf course instead, if it was, like, there's all kinds of. Possibilities for that land that not, aren't necessarily golfing, um, that do benefit the community. And the community is the community. I mean, we can only, we can only serve the community that exists now. I don't think we can hypothesize or or wish for a a more golf friendly community sometime in the future. Um, so anyway, that's, so in that sense, I, the amendment, I think would be helpful. Um, although I still don't need the golf course to be mentioned at all, actually, but like. But and then the other thing I I I question a little bit is, um, there is commercial in Rosemont. There's that little grocery store, which is exactly what. Everybody keeps saying they want and it exists already. So why do we need a community? Hub if we already have what we need? As far as commercial, like, people need a corner store, there is a corner store. And and so why, why do we even uh entertain that? If it's, if it, if it opens the door to this sort of, sort of uh exaggeration of of. Gross exaggeration of what the vision is. If if we're already able to have small scale. Commercial enterprises, serving a commu- a small community, why do we need a community hub? Language, why do we need that sort of zoning if we're already accomplishing what we need? I would just question that.
Well, again, the the vision and the the consultation at that time was having. Neighborhood commercial, a restaurant up there, you know, maybe a hairdresser, uh, those type of things that you could walk to.
Okay, remember.
The um, you know, same vision was for, you know, the east waterfront, that there should be. You know, and there's some of that already. There's, um, you know, a little bakery down there and those type of things. That's what's encouraged and to make. Neighborhoods walkable and support themselves without having to, you know, go downtown to, you know, do some simple business.
So I I'm sorry if I'm. Uh, oh, my last, I'm just, I'm not quite clear yet. Like, if there is a grocery store there now. What's stopping somebody from opening a. Hair salon in their backyard?
It's not zoned for that.
But why is there a grocery store there?
Cause it's zoned for that.
Just that one store.
Yeah.
So.
Been there for a long time.
So this is.
But how did it get zoned that way?
That's exactly what they're doing here is they're zoning for those other commercial uses so that we know where that's gonna be in the Rosemont neighborhood.
Hmm.
So you're pre-planning, like, if we're gonna make, as the density grows, if we're gonna make um an area have little bits of commercial. The plan is.
So.
Through consultation, people feel like that is the best place to do it in that neighborhood.
Yeah, but whoever opens Star Grocery or whatever it is, is that what it's called? They at that time.
Years and years.
Years and years and years ago, applied for that zoning and for that specific property. And because it worked. It worked with the neighbors and it worked with the neighborhood and everybody in the neighborhood was like, we want that. It got approved. So why are we doing things different?
This is a vision in document. You, this is always the order of doing it. First, you have the O C P that kind of like envisions the city as a whole. And then all of those zoning things happen, some, you'll have like zoning that aligns with each of the neighborhoods. And then if you're like, oh, but I wanna put a gym in this place, you would have to apply for a zoning amendment. So the different types of commercial uses. And that's the part about the zoning by law, ha- you can use that to make it align with like your values. Be like. Yeah, we do agree that this is in Rosemont would be like the commercial area, but that doesn't mean that we want, I don't know. Something, something awful like fifty forty candy stores, an avatar.
But but this is what I'm saying, is like, we're, we already have the ability, and I'm not sure why, yeah. We have the ability for people to rezone their property right now and and give us exactly what we need.
And that's, so, so.
So why do we need to change it?
So just, so there is no zoning here, it's zoned a park. So anything that happens on this land.
Yeah, go for it.
Has to come back for zoning to have exactly the discussion that you were asking. If you wanted to do it. If if it's done before, why couldn't you do it again? And that's, that's the part that we would have to do in the future.
Hmm.
Cause it's not bin zoned that way, so. It 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 could be that nothing is there or something is there. It's just that it's a park.
And what I'm trying to get at, I guess, is that that is a possibility still, like the needs of the community are being able to be met. And and this additional language around neighborhood nodes or commercial hubs or what have you. Is the language that's gotten us into this situation where developers think that they have a green light to do. Things that they, the community doesn't need or want. And so I'm in favor of. If it's, if it just means scrapping that language, that vague sort of welcoming language and and keeping it the way it was, where if you have. A a suitable business venture that's supported by your neighborhood, it will be zoned as such, you know, because council is listening. I don't see why we're changing that.
Well, I think it's, you know, because of the, you know, the current clubhouse being there, it was defined. That makes sense to where that commercial hub is. So you don't want residential built there. Because then now you don't have the place for the commercial in that residential neighborhood. So it is good planning to say, okay. This is, you know, we have this undeveloped land, we have this little current little node of of commercial there. If it's gonna expand, it makes sense to put it there in the residential, build up around it. That's, that's. That's the vision, right? Where should it be in this neighborhood versus? It could be anywhere, um.
It's a layer of the bureaucracy, Jesse. Like, we have to have an O C P that plans for the future and we have to, like, take into account all.
and we have to like take into account all of this feedback, whether it's the housing needs study or some kind of like economic driver. We use the O C P to leverage for grants and other ideas and to attract businesses. It's like this overarching planning document through which everything else is fed. And like I just, it's kind of like a layer of the bureaucracy, I don't know if that's a nice way to say it.
I understand what it is, I just think that our language in it needs to be careful.
Yeah, I think we just, I just wanna, I, 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 I think we, we've heard you, cause we're having a lot of discussion about language. And so, and let me tell you, probably changing only one or two sentences of language almost triggers a whole O C P review, so we, like, one of the cautionary tales here is to figure out whether or not we can move forward, cause if we can't move forward, we're going back and we're kind of, depending on how much we change, we're going back and we're gonna do something and we're gonna be having another public meeting. And we're supposed to have this document, not that, not that we have the, if, if we don't meet the government, the government often doesn't meet the criteria is that that we've asked it to meet, so I, I'll stick my neck out there and say, I'm willing to risk that we don't meet their criteria, but this isn't supposed to be done by the end of twenty twenty-five. Um, so we wanna be careful about what we're tweaking here, because some of this probably sends us back to, um, first and second reading and then having to have a public meeting again. So, um, yeah, just, 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 just a cautionary tale on that. I've got, I believe I'm now at Counselor Payne and then Counselor Woodward. We are still on these few words of amendment at the start of four point nine.
Please make sure I'm on the list.
Okay, Paige, you're on the list.
I didn't have anything about the amendment before, but I will say very quickly, could we, is changing the wording of the golf course to recreational facility a substantive change that would trigger any sort of?
Recreation, I think it's actually called the, I think it's even, at one time it was called the Nelson. Wasn't it the Nelson Golf and Recreation Society or something? I don't think that word changes the.
Okay. But then I'm still.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you're right, we, we're talking about words now.
Yeah, I feel the same about golf, I don't, I'm not sure that the way we've golfed in the past is going to be a, a future-facing
There's.
recreational activity, there will be ways that that, um, sport carries forward, but maybe not on huge amounts of land.
You're not the first, nor will you be the last counselor that thought golf should be something else up there, or perhaps sixty-nos.
Saying it should be something else, I'm saying we need to open, you know, as Counselor Pinero was saying, I, that's first I thought of it, just open that possibility to what the future will hold when we're talking about, you know, an O C P twenty fifty.
Yeah, and it, and it might, cause remember, it's all just zoned park now, so who knows what the ask might come back. The ask could come back and there is no golf course there anymore. Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, so.
Counselor Paige.
Thank you, Mayor, um, on the amendment, um, like, as we were all talking, I was, I went back to the document, four point nine, you know, as you, as you were doing Counselor Lockenberger's. You know, it's, it's all there, I mean, the, 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 the brake pumping and the, the, um, so I'm trying to get out of here, like, the, there's lots of stopgaps, it's all in here.
Guardrails.
Uh, guardrails, thank you, um, so, um, again, I go, I go back, instead of putting, putting an amendment, uh, into this, that we actually just do some communication with the public, because it is all here and we have been at this for two and a half years. Um, so I'm wondering, like, because there's so many guardrails built in, could we, because I'm, what, what really does wor- worry me is that if we do this, that we kick off, as the mayor was saying, a whole nother process?
I don't, I don't think that.
More comfortable with.
I don't think we would, I think that this change, this is a introductory statement, this doesn't affect policy or procedure, so, and I have to say that I, I like this.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so as long as.
I think it's a flavor that people like the change, we still have to hear from Counselor Paige on it.
So my only request would be that if we are gonna go ahead with the amendment, that we do put out some kind of, of communication that clearly defines like what's happening here the guardrails are built in, like, something that the people can grab onto and be like, okay, like, they're, they were, they're, they were obviously thinking about all this stuff already. I just feel like people maybe didn't understand that there were so many pe- there were so many guardrails already built in, cause it felt like the, the, what I heard tonight was kind of like a, a bit of a panic, like, you know, in, in, in two years, there're gonna be, you know, uh, ten million dollar condos up there or something, like, that's not gonna happen, so I think people need to know that. Uh, so that's what I'm asking, so.
Yeah.
We're gonna do it, please, please, some communication from the city.
I'm gonna allow Natalie to respond, then Counselor Paige.
To the chair, um, we did receive a number of letters, uh, for the public hearing, um, and, uh, most of them were related to Granite Point, but we did receive a few other letters. Um, so as a resource, both to the community and to council, at the very bottom of that package is a staff response.
Hmm.
Um, I'm wondering if that communication, uh, maybe because we brought it to the top of that package and then shared with the community and it does kind of talk about, um, you know, we don't have an application and it will be reviewed against these policies. And, um, it just kind of clarifies what these policies do and what they don't do.
Okay.
Um, but if there's any more, if you want more clarity or more details in that communication, we can certainly provide that as well, but that was part of the public communication package.
And I thought that was a, that was a good, if you haven't had a chance to read, cause there, cause we've gotten a lot of information the last few days, but that's um, letter that's gone back out to most of those letters that were received, I think covers some of the concerns that you have, um, Counselor Woodward. Counselor Paige, Payne, Paige, P is over on the left-hand side.
Thank you, um, so I'm in support of the change. I think it, it does a good job of centering the neighborhood and, and the residents uh, in that language where the previous introductory language did not, so I appreciate that. And I do think, uh, going to staff and having an examination of what it takes to renew the plan, which is in a couple of months will be seven years old, the Granite Neighborhood Plan, uh, will be appropriated and all will bring a motion to that nature after we're done this piece, because I think there's benefit to having the dialogue with that neighborhood once more and seeing if there's any other changes that need to be incorporated before we go through rezonings and these other tough questions, because that's gonna give better clarity for the developer, for Granite, for the neighborhood, for us.
Well, it could be a new developer at that time too, I mean, you're gonna be going through this process every time a del- a developer comes, I mean, I mean, I've been at this table long enough, I've seen, I saw the, the Kulos property, Walmart waterfront rezoned, I don't know, four times. There's a piece of property on the way to, you'll be, that road that I think has come in front of council seven times for a rezone, still has nothing built on it, so, um, yeah, you can, you can tailor it so much, but I think having the conversation is an important conversation to continue, um, having for sure. But right now, there's, it's still a park with holes in it.
Shall we, uh, remove the amendment?
Just wanna see, okay, so I see no other conversation on the amendments, so, um, Counselor Lockenberger, I'm gonna go with, um, your, no, your second one here. Encouraging the vitality of the Rosemont neighborhood by encouraging redevelopment of the golf course in efforts to encourage a healthy and diverse community that is highly integrated into the city.
Too many encourages.
Okay, you wanna get rid of all those encourages.
It's encouraged heavily. Guaranteed the vitality of the Rosemont neighborhood.
So acquire the amendment.
Well, we have to, we have to have one that we all agree on here, so it, so your la- your very last one says here, encourage the redevelopment of the golf course in efforts to promote a vi- a vital and walkable neighborhood that is highly integrated into the city.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean.
You wrote it.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine with me, I, it was the last, I, it was too many encourages, it said encourage three times.
Cause that was, cause there was encourage three times in the original one.
We can enhance, we can elevate, um, foster.
We did foster.
We can the-source ourselves around.
Well, it could be, we encourage the vitality of the Rosemont neighborhood by supporting redevelopment of the golf course in an effort to build a healthy and diverse community that is highly integrated with the city.
Yeah, I like, I mean, I like that one.
In order.
Yeah, go with that one.
Yeah.
In order to.
In order to.
Yeah, stronger, stronger, see?
Did, did we get that?
Did we get that?
No.
Sonia.
Well, I've got it, so, wh- where did you put that in, so, what, what do you have here, was encourage the vitality of the Rosemont? And just tell me where you put in your extra pieces.
Instead of in effort, he said in order to.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, okay, so the redevelopment of the course, of the golf course in order to foster. Okay.
It's this one here.
That one says another try?
Right, this one here.
This one is better?
This one here. Can you read that?
Encourage, yeah.
Encourage the vitality of the Rosemont.
The Rosemont neighborhood by supporting the redevelopment of the golf course.
And what was your word again?
In order to foster.
In order to foster.
Or encourage, everyone.
No, we're not using, we're not using efforts, but.
Um, in order to foster, oh, and then I just keep going, okay.
Yeah. A healthy and diverse community that is highly integrated into the city.
We have fostered there, we don't need in order, we just need to foster.
Yeah.
Okay.
Foster, yeah, see, now we're getting rid, getting rid of more words.
Can we, can we hear about it, Sonia?
Okay, I think Sonia's got now.
Um. We changed encourage the vitality?
Nope, we talked about that.
To encourage the vitality of the Rosemont neighborhood by
Supporting.
Supporting, that's what I needed to change. Supporting development of the golf course to foster a healthy and diverse community.
Yeah.
And we might wanna say golf course lands.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or recreation lands.
Golf course lands, yeah.
Well, they're now there, golf course lands.
Yeah, I know, golf course lands, that makes more sense.
Got it. Hey, so, on the amendment,
That's the amendment.
Um, we've had it moved and we've had it seconded.
Hey, sorry, should we just say support the long-term vi- vitality versus encourage the long-term? Like, I don't know how you encourage vitality, you support it.
We got supporting right after, by supporting redevelopment.
Encouraging.
Change to.
I think that one could be encouraging.
Okay, so then it would be, be changed to support the vitality of the Rosemont neighborhood.
I think the long-term.
By encouraging.
Changed to support the long-term vitality of the Rosemont neighborhood by encouraging.
The redevelopment of the golf course lands?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're just swapping out encourage and support.
Encouraging redevelopment of the golf course lands to foster a healthy and diverse community.
You have a ten here.
Okay.
Uh, perhaps we could just change the golf course lands to all of the lands within the Granite Point redevelopment land use designation.
Granite Point redevelopment.
That's more recognition.
And, and the reason is that in one of the policies, it states that there's a maximum of three hundred units. If you refer to the Granite Point golf course lands, that is not including the already approved, her already built units that are.
Right.
So you're actually would be increasing the number of units, so it's better perhaps to reference the Granite Point redevelopment land use designation.
That's why we have planners, cause we will stay over here on support and encourage.
You guys will actually.
We didn't inadvertently want to, uh, perhaps give them an extra twenty units or something.
And it's called the Granite Point redevelopment land use.
Designation.
Designation, to foster a healthy and diverse community.
Can we, Sonia, can we hear the whole thing again?
Um, okay, so that language that we're gonna change, which I have in here, um, be changed to, um, to support the long-term vitality of the Rosemont neighborhood by encouraging redevelopment of all the Granite Point redevelopment yet, land use designation to foster a healthy and diverse community. To foster the, not all of them.
Redevelopment of, uh.
When you do it, you're only competing.
Yeah.
We are the best.
Oh, right, I'm.
Okay, but then you're about to justify it, I'm gonna risk asking for a vote.
Okay, okay.
Please.
Yep. So, remove the seconded, all those in favor, and that carries, thank you. So that's resolution number one.
That's the amendment.
The House of Amendment, now we're on, now we're back to the, uh.
Okay.
Still on by title only, third reading by title only.
I'll move.
No, that's already moved.
Or, okay.
Be moved and seconded.
Okay.
We have more discussion regarding any other aspects of the O C P in general, okay, Counselor Payne, then I brought Counselor Pinero afterwards.
Um, there were two additional letters that were not relating to Granite Point about the Perry Road.
Hmm.
Um, access to Upper Rosemont, I don't know if that's the proper way to say that. Uh, so I, I do understand that that was just carried forward from the twenty thirteen O C P, which sort of makes sense in a way, but on the other hand, this O C P could be the opportunity to just, like, we cleaned up some other things to clean this up, because we've got our active transportation running over, from my perspective, two different parcels of private property, because it's going over the Selkirk property and then it's going over the residence of Perry Road, who did come to us in twenty twenty-two and asked us to do something about that. And nothing has moved forward until, uh, recently. And now, uh, we have the opportunity to just take that off the map until we do have a different designation, is that a challenge you think?
I would ask, I think that's a challenge to do that at this late in the game, and I would suggest that there's a conversation coming up in the not-too-distance future regarding Perry Lane, in which case we will do whatever then the necessary changes would be it.
So at that point in time, we can move the line, is that what you're saying? Because I think once we pass this, the line is there.
It's, it's there, but just like everything else, we can change this as we go forward, you just.
And I just, yeah, I think the, always the intent of council when they created that subdivision was to have had this public access, just didn't get registered properly.
To have a public access through two sets of private property as opposed to utilizing, purchasing a right of way that we could have.
Just like the whole, um, waterfront pathway, uh, down, um, John's Walk is all through private property. That's a stat right away, the, I think the, the, along the prestige, again, is, um, private lands, that's a stat right away as well. That's a common, um, you know, basically, cities decide whether they're gonna take ownership or put a stat right away to allow access, so. Um, anyway, you can talk about it, I think that it's always been to create that, um, corridor through there and, um, the that was always the intent to, you know, go through that lands, I would say Selkirk lands are public lands, not private lands, um. So, you know, that was always.
I think from a liability.
That was always the, the vision.
Perspective, are they?
Yeah, I can walk through Selkirk College's lands anytime I want.
And if we designate it as active transportation and you walk through it and something happens to you, then we're responsible as the city, because we've designated it as an act of transportation, or is Selkirk responsible? Because you tripped over something, that's the part that I'm.
Anyway, we work for Selkirk on, on, on the ones, so.
Yeah, I, I, I am having a hard time imagining, and, and maybe I'm mistaken, that in twenty thirteen, uh, council of the day envisioned what that
Yeah, they did.
area would become, okay, they did, okay.
Ever since that subdivision was developed. It just, we created that fire lane, it wasn't meant to be for car traffic, but it was always meant for public to access and they did access that, it was envisioned for twenty years, I mean, it wasn't until the property owners changed that, that changed, right?
Okay.
And council can choose a different route in the future, right now, that, that was the vision that, you know, um, and that hasn't changed from twenty thirteen.
Natalie?
I just wanted to kind of highlight, I know it was in, in that response, but it doesn't, it does not commit council to move forward with the pathway in that location, but it's just kind. but it's just kind of highlighting, um, that there could be an opportunity there and obviously Perry Road Lane is is very disconnected from the rest of the city. Uh, so I think it it does make sense to try and find an active transportation route at some point.
Totally agree.
Um, but it is really just meant to be conceptual. Um, at a later date, you know, we could remove that, uh, the direction of council.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Um, Counselor Penaro.
Yeah, so just going back to the O C P thing, the bigger, the bigger one, the big one. So we have a deadline, right, of the end of the year and you've said that. So there's that pressure and and obviously there's been a lot of work people put this through and and that is the, like, many times that's the case, like so much work goes into this and then, and then but and then half the town shows up and says that they don't like it. So I just, and and you know, Mary, you said, well, if we have to be careful because if we change one thing, we may end up having to reject the whole thing and have another public hearing and and I, without, without uh, mitigating or or trying to sound like that's what I want necessarily because I realize how much work that is and and how much staff time that is and I understand that absolutely. So I'm not advocating for that per se. I just think that we need to be, like, the idea of, of, of passing this with all of that clear, like, that clear direction from the public that said they don't want this. And then on some sort of, on basically a promise to revisit it later. What that's, I just, I'm, you know, uh, getting ahead of it here and and projecting how that sounds to people. And and I think what I've heard many times before in other situations is that they, many people feel that, you know, we as a city kind of inch things forward to a point of no return and then do it anyway. And and that's how a lot of these things are looked at and 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 we need, and there was many people that actually just came out and said it, like, there needs to be trust built here because this has happened many times before. I don't, you know, I don't see how we would, like, this, this development, take this development, I don't see how it can go forward, given, like, the the public's position on it. But still, there's that perception that we are just pushing things over the line until there's nothing we can do about it anymore and it and it happens. And and I think we need to be aware of that. And so I'm not advocating that we blow it up and start over again. I'm just advocating that we take that message to heart because I think it is real. I think people are, I don't think it's just spin. You know, like, it's not a matter of just putting a different spin on it. There's something that happens actually that's making these things go forward that with, that a lot of people aren't, that's not what they wanted. That's not what they were envisioning. And and there was a public pr- uh, engagement process and somehow what they wanted and what ended up being proposed are not the same thing. And so we need to examine that, that process as well. And and so you know, I just wanna, like, i- if this is gonna be, you know, to respect our deadlines and to be in compliance and all these things, we have to go forward with this. It needs to be with that very strong, uh, realization that something does need to change in here. And there's a, there's a clear, like, I don't think people don't understand. I think people do understand and they're against it. And I think that that needs, so it's not a matter of messaging. It's a matter of, it's a matter of actual nuts and bolts. It's fundamental. Something needs to change in there. So I don't know how that works quite. So like, there's part of me that would like, doesn't wanna, I don't wanna approve this because it's not something that people approve of. And we're here to represent people, not to ram stuff down their throat. And I understand what that means. And so, you know, maybe we will approve it. But like, that's also real and it really bothers me. So I I just feel like we need to go forward with some direction to staff. If we're gonna approve this and and revisit it later, it has to be serious and it has to be, it has to have some teeth and it has to be something that ensures that the vision of the community is respected. Um, and not brushed aside or 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 ignored because we've gone too far. We we're now where our hand is forced or we're in a legal, we have to, we have to find the legal avenue to to do the will of the community, not the legal, not be restrained by our legal avenues to do the will of the community.
Yeah, just, just to be clear, Counselor Penaro, I didn't say that we have to do this. All I was telling you is that the more we change, the more it goes back. And you know what? If it goes back, like I said, and the government wants to write a letter and say shame on you and penalize us, I'm willing to wear that. If that's what it takes. That's what I said. I didn't say we've gotten here. It's been two and a half years. Now we have to pass.
No, I wasn't suggesting that.
I just wanna be, I just, I just wanna be very clear because it sounded like you were saying to me that I was saying that.
I don't know. You said that pressure. I was just talking about that pressure. It does exist.
No, I mean, like. Yeah, I mean, because there is, because the more, because the, the reality is, is the more that we
It's not what you said.
go on other things, if we had another three or four things here that we didn't particularly agree with, it it does become more a challenge in terms of the fact that it 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 will be delayed and it will be coming back and we would have another public hearing. We're getting, be really good at public hearings, so. This is our third one in like three months or something like that, so.
It's a good thing.
Yeah.
Fill in the room.
This is, yeah, exactly. Um, I think I'm at Counselor Lochner.
Okay. Um, so, uh, through the chair, um, to Counselor Penaro. There's a couple of things you said that I want to clarify. It did feel like you were suggesting uh, that, you know, we as council and city and staff are, you know, guilty of some thing, some narrative about, yeah, we inch things along and then it happens and we don't listen or respond to the community. That's what, that's what it sounded like to me.
I'm saying what, that is what, that is the narrative that I hear a lot. I'm not assigning guilt at all.
Sure. Right, you don't agree with it.
I'm just saying that that's what a lot of people, that's the perception. And so I think it's something that we have to be, I think I said that.
Sure. Yeah. For sure.
But there has to be a realization of what, if you're gonna do things, you have to realize what it, what people think you're doing.
Yeah.
And and so it's something that needs to be accounted for.
Oh, I think all of us agree. And a two-plus-year process of doing the O C P in which there was time and time again engagement with the public, really, I think underscores how much we spend listening to the community. Sometimes, though, people only hear at the end or they only hear something, something that, you know, a write poorly written paragraph or or something, or a badly made video. And then that becomes the symbol of everything that they're concerned about. That video is just a video. It's not this project. It's not four point nine. That video is completely divorced from what four point nine is and I don't think that is clear. I don't think many people understand that. What we heard tonight, I think, was a lot of people talking about their worries about what this project is gonna do to unaffordable housing. It's gonna drive up housing costs. We heard, or whenever again, people saying, you know, Mike, I can't live here. I can't afford to live here. My kids can't afford to live here. And the problem is this development. But that isn't, and and then they blame four point nine, section four point nine. That is a misunderstanding. That is not true. What is true is that the community thought long and hard about creating a diverse, interesting, um, development in that neighborhood. Something that is environmental, something that supports the business community on Baker Street, something that will create a diverse mix of housing, including affordable housing, will contribute to the Affordable Housing Fund, will do a lot of really positive things that the community is looking for. But I don't think people, many people saw that or or they thought, and I did hear this myself, that, oh, that's just smoke and mirrors. What's really behind it is what they saw in that video. And that's not true. It's not the video. It's literally what's the words on the page are saying and describing. Now, it could, you know, step by step, as we go along, as the development permit comes and and the process continues, there will be people, including the Granite Point golf course itself, members of the community, who will be advocating for something like the Halo Development. So it's not universal that all of Nelson is opposed to Halo. In fact, so many people that I've heard from actually love that vision. They're like, oh, amazing. Wow, we're gonna have a golf course. There's gonna be, uh, residential pricing there. We'll have this world-class course. We'll have like the businesses and the restaurants of Baker Street see some opportunity. So there's, let's be clear, there's gonna be some constituency in the community that we're, do support that vision. So I think this conversation isn't over. But my sense and I think certainly my perspective is that what I see here, what I imagine, what I read this, is definitely some more residential development, for sure. Definitely a golf course or an open piece of parkland, hopefully, but not a thousand units of housing on every strip of grass. I don't imagine that. I imagine something that's got a lot of green space, that's gonna really support the ability of residents of Rosemont to be able to walk through that golf course or ski it in the wintertime or sled down some of those slopes in the wintertime. I still see that being there, whatever happens. And that's what I think most of us are gonna be working towards. Yes, there will be development, uh, housing, there will be units built, for sure. That's already gonna happen. And hopefully, we can support with like open and honest and good faith dialogue, a project that the people of Rosemont will come to love and and in, that will include, hopefully, a pub, maybe a little restaurant, maybe a, a grocery store as well. And I think that vision, and I agree with you, I agree with Counsel Woodward, and I think we've all said something like it, that we need to continue as a council and as a city to communicate that truth. And so we will.
That's in there.
Okay, so I'm gonna take Counselor Tate as the last speaker.
Oh, goodness, that's a lot of pressure. You don't need to take me as last. I just wanted to riff off Counselor Locktuber for one sec and.
No, well, he's working on something over there, so I'm.
Thank you.
Cause, cause I think he's, he's bringing, he wants to bring, he wants to bring another resolution.
I, I just wanted to be clear because you're the last.
He's not, he's not changing, he's not changing this. I, I wanna see if we can have a vote on.
Okay.
The agenda for the head of.
One. Thank you, Counselor Tate.
Okay.
Um, I love what you said. I agree with what you said. I agree the challenge is that the language is vague, sometimes necessarily. The zoning needs to be aligned with our values and that's where we can leverage and say, the building must have recreation if that's where we end up. You can say that in a zoning by law or in the zone.
Hmm.
Um, the one little piece I'd like to just bounce off of is saying, um, where you're focusing a little bit on the Rosemont residents and how it would work for them. True, and for the whole city.
Yeah.
I think it's really important that we don't just say the person who lives right next door has to work for that person, but everything that is in this visionary document is for the growth of the entire city. So we do want green spaces on both sides of the city. We do want pubs, if you're into pubs, and restaurants, if you're into restaurants, and I keep saying pocket library in all the different little walkable, walkable spaces in the whole city. And that makes the whole city an awesome place to live. And it ma- and it, it has all of these, um, downstream effects of attracting new businesses and attracting young families and then our schools are blossoming and then we're getting the right kind of funding for our schools and so on and so forth. So yes, working for the residents of Rosemont, but also this document is intended to work for the residents of the entire city. So just to riff off all the beautiful inspirational things you just said and spread that out.
And the equity, I mean equity of access and equity of services right across the city.
Thank you. Yeah, you should.
Okay.
Equity was one of the big, I, I was on the committee. I've been on the committee for two years. I mean, we've, we did a lot, we did work. We didn't just show up and eat pizza. We.
It's a lot of work.
Okay, so I just wanna regroup my thoughts here is that we've passed the amendment. And have we passed reading for the third time only? Okay.
They haven't voted on it.
So I'm going to ask for, um, seeing someone, nobody else has got their hand up, uh, if I could take a vote on, um, that the official community plan by law number three, six, two, nine, twenty twenty-five, be read third time by title only, but moved and seconded?
As amended.
Oh, as amended, sorry. Be read third time. As amended.
That's why we're paying the big bucks.
The title only. Um, all those in favor? And opposed? And that carries. I'm just gonna ask, Counsel, you didn't put your hand up for either. Are you in the affirmative or are you against?
Ah.
If you don't vote, you're in the affirmative.
If you don't vote, you're in the affirmative. So I'm just, I just, I just wanna just clarify. I, like, I, you know, to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm in the affirmative.
Okay. Thank you. Anyways, carries. So, um, now we're on to resolution number two.
Move.
Second.
Whoa, okay, Counselor Tate. Let me count the years.
Let's make sure I'm on the. I'm, yeah, I'm on the right one. I'm on so many. Sorry, I am now, I'm pretty sure. Thanks. Uh, oh, that council passes, passes the following resolution, number two, that the official community plan by law number three, six, two, nine, twenty twenty-five be finally adopted.
As amended.
As amended.
Be finally adopted.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on this? I think we've cleared it off. Nobody had any other points they wanted to bring up or other.
There's one other point that I'd like to bring up, just to emphasize something you said earlier.
Okay.
I did hear a remark about, um, if we didn't move this forward, we would need to go back to a public hearing. And I just wanna stress the fact that the public hearing is, as you've said, so we can hear from the community. If there is something strongly heard that we feel we aren't able to deal with in a way that staff is supporting us on, we definitely would go back through the process.
Oh, yeah.
That's what the public hearing is for. So I just wanna make sure that was clear because I think there's been a lot going on here.
Sure, for sure.
And I want to have everyone who spent their valuable time to come here and speak with us tonight to understand that I for one, and I think everyone here is very grateful for that. And we did hear them and we did read the letters and believe that we have a a good process going forward with the support of staff as we do this.
And I think there's gonna be many opportunities as we look at only this development, but other developments in town as they come online that whoever is in these chairs in another twelve months, um, will be looking at having more public hearings. Slant is developed.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? And that carries. Okay, I'm going to ask Counselor Page, who's been waiting patiently to put resolution number three on the floor.
I counsel direct staff to investigate the impacts of re-engaging the public on the Granite Point neighborhood plan and report back as soon as possible on the required resources, timeline, and potential outcomes of a new, new planning process. Being specific, this is about the plan, which we had done before.
And what, I just, can I, can I just have some clarity about, what are we asking them to look at at the plan? Cause there is no plan, right? I, I struggle a little bit with the fact that we have no development in front of us. I don't want staff to tell us. I don't want staff to tell us what, I'm just trying to figure out this, what the development's supposed to look like, cause they're not the they're not the developers. I just, I'm, do you see where I'm a little bit lost? It's late. But do you see where I'm a bit?
So my understanding, uh, and happy to have this conversation, is we had developed the spec- the specific neighborhood plan in the past, which we're now incorporating into the O C P as is because that's what's standing, that's what adjusted.
That's right.
And they've repositioned some of that, uh, introductory statement, but my ask is essentially seeing the amount of conversation the community wishes to have, that examining and re-engaging the public on what I would call the Granite. That examining and re-engaging the public on what I would call the Granite Neighborhood Plan, which is that section and the details on the specific pieces is what's it gonna cost? What could possibly end up changing? And what would be the impacts of doing that process once more? So my goal with that was would be first to hear from staff in a couple meeting cycles to find out is this doable? Does it even kinda make sense because it's new? Or, you know, for some of the reasons already stated, it actually just, we should wait until some other checkpoint comes along. I think I've heard, I have heard enough from the community that their introduction to the twenty nineteen process was at this point, a draft of sorts to the community. We adopted it, we took it in, new information is coming in the subsequent time. We've had a pandemic in the middle of it. And people are looking at that particular process and those particular bullet points and wanting to weigh in once more. Now, maybe we don't deviate very far from what the bullet points are that are in that section, but maybe we end up in a different place. But I think part and parcel with the conversations that's been going on is when we start to contemplate what could be going on with this developer or potentially another developer. The community still needs to get their teeth into what those pieces look like now that they're fully engaged. And I just believe that they're connected to this work so much more than they were in twenty eighteen that it 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 behooves us.
They were connected to the work.
Well, they were. I don't know. And I went to all those, I went to the public meetings too, but I I just think like we have benefited from going through these processes a few times. I think this is of such importance that I think it it does make sense to understand what it would take to.
Review like four point nine. Yeah, to review the four, you you want a review of four point nine?
I wanted to review it.
Well, they're the same thing. I I.
Could you just make, I'm sorry.
Like maybe we should just have a little workshop with the council to clarify that, because I don't know. Maybe we add us to reconsider three hundred units or um right now. Now it's, you know, it it was designed to have the lower, you know, lower units in the, you know, ordering the residential and higher units and the, you know, the current hub where the clubhouse is would be the little commercial center, like you wanna revisit.
I I think we've heard enough from the community that tells me the community wants to reconsider much of what's what we have laid down in twenty nineteen. I think the nonprofit golf course came to us at a time looking to create more certainty and flexibility around what could be going on there. Community engaged at the time, things have shifted. It's almost, you know, we're already on the on the rounding error of a decade. What does it look like to look at this plan and renew it and connect with the community?
Well, maybe we can bring back the implications.
That's what this is at. This is just at, that is what this is asking for.
Yeah, cause I think it's looking at four point nine and then what the implications are for the rest of the O C P.
Yeah, what are the required resources, timeline and potential outcomes of a new planning process? That's that's the action.
I'm gonna go to staff just because, yeah.
So right now, we and I have to deliberate. Potential motion for council. So what we've come up with um is that council directs staff to investigate the legal, technical and administrative impacts of making changes to the Granite Point section of O C P by law thirty six, twenty nine, twenty twenty five. And we can come back with some options uh as well. And we can also give council some idea of perhaps what the lawyer says about this all and administrative impacts and costs and all that sort of thing.
I'm also agree with that.
Okay.
Friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment. We'll go with, we'll go with the staff. We can just go with the staff recommendation. You haven't been seconded yet, so.
Is that like number three then?
That would be number three. So did everybody hear that and understand it? And so.
I'll second that.
So moved by Counselor Page, seconded by Counselor Woodward.
Sorry, Sonya.
The staff recommendation that Sonya, you gonna read it again? You wanna hear it again?
Sure.
Um, that council direct staff to investigate the legal, technical and administrative impacts of making changes to the Granite Point section of the O C P by law three, six, two, nine, twenty twenty five.
Right, that's a good first step.
And maybe they'll check the by law number.
That's right. It's three, six, two, nine, twenty twenty five. At that rate, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so is every, Counselor Pay- Payne.
I just, so I wasn't here in twenty nineteen and I'm trying to understand this, cause it looks like in twenty seventeen there was a Granite Point revitalization plan. And then that became the Granite Point plan, neither one of which I can find, but maybe I can get them later, so I have that historical perspective. So, um yeah, I just sort of have news articles right now, but so it started in twenty seventeen as a request from the not-for-profit running the golf club who was not um able to be financially viable and sort of moved onward from there to where we are today. Okay, I will do my homework while um the investigating process. Thank you. Just needed some clarity around that, cause I can't find all the documents here.
Okay, seeing that recommendation number three has been moved and seconded. It was uh moved by Page, seconded by uh Woodward. And all those in favor? And that carries. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Melanie, and to.
Oh, yes. Thank you to staff. They're not, they're not going anywhere, cause we we just, we just started on the list. Okay. So.
Don't look at the clock.
I just wanna thank council for their reasoned and thoughtful comments around this um process. I I think that's one of the things that even when we don't necessarily all agree, we can still all leave the room and know that we can walk down the same side of the street tomorrow. So just want to thank everybody um for that. It's been a, it's been a long um journey, the O C P, and it's a fluid document. So the journey really hasn't ended. It's just begun down a different path. We're on to nine B. Um zoning by law amendment of the official community plan update by law notice enforcement amendment, community plan update. So adopting the proposed official community plan, which which repeals the current O C P, requires several housekeeping changes to the zoning by law and the by law notice enforcement by law. It is proposed to transfer several elements from the twenty thirteen O C P to the zoning by law rather than carry them forward in the twenty twenty five O C P. No regulatory changes are being proposed and none will impact property's development potential. At its regular meeting on August nineteenth, council approved the first and second readings of the zoning by law amendment, official community plan update number three, six, two, six, twenty twenty five, as well as three readings of the by law notice enforcement amendment, official community plan number three, six, two, seven, twenty twenty five. A public hearing for the zoning by law amendment, official community plan update number three, six, two, five, three, six, two, six, twenty twenty five, is scheduled for September ninth. Council has now requested to proceed with the third and final readings of the zoning by law amending by law and to adopt the by law notice enforcement amending by law. Are these designed to be tongue twisters at nine o'clock at night? Anyways, okay. Okay, moved by Counselor Woodward, seconded by Counselor Payne. Counselor Woodward?
That the zoning by law amendment, official community plan update three, six, two, six, twenty twenty five be read a third time by title only.
Counselors, do you have any questions? I think this is all basically just housekeeping and we had a good review of this at the last meeting. Then I will hazard all those in favor and opposed and that carries.
Move second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Woodward, seconded by Counselor Page.
That the zoning by law amendment, official community plan update three, six, two, six, twenty twenty five be finally adopted.
Okay, so didn't have any conversation on recommendation one, all those in favor of recommendation two? And that carries. Thank you, counsel.
Move three.
And Counselor Woodward, seconder, Counselor Tate.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. That the by law notice enforcement amendment, official community plan update three, six, two, seven, twenty twenty five be finally adopted.
Any questions or concerns? Seeing no questions, all those in favor? And that carries. Thank you, counselors. Moving on to the development application procedural amendment.
Move.
Moved by Counselor Woodward, seconded by Counselor Tate.
That the development application procedure amendment, official community plan update by law number two, six, twenty eight, twenty twenty five be finally adopted.
And I think this is, you know, as Ken's point, this gives us a lot more authorities to actually address a lot of things that you heard during the O C P, so.
For sure, and I would maybe just add, it it does provide clarity, cause often when speaking to developers, they can sometimes disagree on whether or not studies are required. It's a very clear now in provincial legislation and in municipal by law. Without a doubt, the director can ask for these uh studies now.
Yeah, this is a great addition, given so many changes that the provincial government has put in that sort of make you feel like you don't have any way to put in any guardrails. But I think this is great that we're now adopting this. So so it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? And that carries. Thank you, counselors. Um, council, um, it's craziness and I I know that you're all gonna vote in favor, but I can't be in the room when you have this vote, so. Um, unforeceived um conflict, uh, this is um, this is Kate Tate is the acting mayor.
Uh, the city of Nelson implemented its short-term rental regulations in twenty seventeen. Since then, staff have continued to monitor their effectiveness and bring forward amendments as needed to clarify requirements, streamline processes and strengthen enforcement. The proposed amendment, the fees and charges by law number three, zero, nine, two, two thousand and eight, aims to simplify the fee structure for short-term rental guest room licenses, streamline the application process and ensure greater clarity and flexibility for license holders. Council passed first three readings of the proposed by law at the August nineteenth regular meeting. Fees and charges amendment, short-term rental guest rooms by law number three, six, four, five, twenty twenty five is now presented for adoption. Do staff have anything to add? Moved by Counselor Page.
Second by Woodward.
Can you read it for us, Paige?
That the fees and charges amendment, short-term rental guest rooms by law number three, six, four, five, twenty twenty five be finally adopted.
Questions? I have a question. Did you get any new feedback from the thirteen affected license holders?
No, we haven't notified them yet. We are gonna notify them tomorrow about the change.
And did you have any other, whenever short-term rentals comes up, we we sometimes hear from people. It's just one of the things that we hear about. Has there been any additional feedback as this has come through agendas? Okay, interesting. Thanks. Any other questions? All those in favor? Pass. Thank you. Um, I do have one other question that just came into my brain as we were doing all of this. Um, can you please remind me the new provincial regulations this year that had to do with you don't have to have a public hearing if it's just for a rezon for just for housing, if it's within the O C P? Can you remind me that new rule? Sorry to. Yes, sorry, I'm gonna try to wrap my brain at nine o'clock at night. So I think uh.
Ken, I think Ken knows. He's excited. He's rolling.
Public hearings, um, and the city cannot hold a public hearing uh for a rezoning that is consistent with your O C P, that is for residential or if fifty percent of the gross floor area um of the development is also residential. So if there's a mixed use component and at least half of the project is residential, then that project would also get escaped uh the public hearing. The rest of the rezoning process uh would still be in place. So that would be a public open house, neighbor notification, and council could still receive letters. Thank you.
One, I think council can also choose to have more process, right?
You could change your processes.
Right, post posting, you know, posting a session like, you know, the Granite Point. You know, council at that time chose to have a mediated um session to hear from the public and and get feedback. So you can, you can add additional steps. You just can't have a normal.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. You guys are really fast with that. Very good. We are at now ten um eight. So um the proposed twenty twenty six council meeting calendar and the twenty twenty six acting mayor schedule are presented for council approval. Um, I asked staff to bring this forward um as early as possible this year, so that people can have opportunity to plan their vacations and whatever for twenty twenty six accordingly. And uh you'll see in there the dates for the usual things that we attend, A K B L G, F C M and U B C. So um, there we go.
Move.
Moved by Counselor Woodward.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Tate. Any concerns, whatever. Um, as you know, this could always come back and be adjusted. Did you have a concern?
Just a comment.
Sure.
I will be gone for almost all of December, so.
That's fine.
Hopefully nothing happens.
I mean, sometimes people are gone for the month that they've been assigned and so it goes on a, moves on a go-forward basis.
Okay.
So if there is nobody here in, if you weren't here and I wasn't here, um, Counselor Lockenberger would take the chair for any meetings that needed to be held. That's the procedural by law requirement, so. Counselor Page.
I'm looking at just the handful of meetings that land immediately after a holiday. Specifically like Easter.
Of what month, Counselor Page?
Well, there's a few of them and I'm I'm almost contemplating that like. Sorry. Well, just feel, yeah, it feels, yeah, with A K B L G there, like it feels like in April, if the regular and the committee were all both shifted one more week farther, so. The regular was on the fourteenth of April before we went to A K B L G. We're not coming off of Easter and going straight into a meeting, which means we're now, we're all reviewing agendas. Uh, and then we're also not coming off of A K B L G and going straight into a cow, or at least a day into a cow. But then I look at May and I feel like if we keep following that schedule, then we get the conf- we we don't go straight from Victoria Day into uh into another committee, the whole. So maybe suggesting we make that shift.
We could start in February. We could start in February.
I kinda, yeah, that's why I was slowly, I wasn't doing the math as fast as you, but I was like, I feel like February, if you shift it forward and then just follow that all the way through until probably June.
I do find it quite difficult to read the agendas when we're at a conference.
Cause yeah, I just think that whole quarter, those two quarters, we're just like coming from a thing and then going to a meeting, coming to a thing and going to a meeting.
Yeah, and that's.
Coming from a holiday and going to a meeting.
Yeah, and that's kinda what the calendar looks like this year too. So, but I mean, um, if you don't wanna pass it, I will take it back and and look at it.
But yeah, for early enough.
Again.
Yeah.
I mean, cause we run into this holidays, it's like, you know, this year we've gone, we had to cancel a meeting in July. So we had one meeting in July. We had one meeting in August. We're only having one meeting in September. So the work catches up with us because this September, Tuesday is truth and reconciliation where we would have normally had the cow fall for this month. So it's it's never a perfect. I was trying to do scheduling for March, contemplating those that have children, that there might be a longer break in there versus the break of four days at Easter, whereas there's two weeks in March that are um for spring break. So I mean, I I did, it's not like I don't think about when I'm contemplating it, but this is like, where do you move it to? And I don't think you wanna come to come here back to back Tuesdays. And it also makes it very difficult for staff to to do the work if we have, have them. But I will, I will look at it again.
And the election's on the seventeenth of October and then the inaugural council meeting's on the third.
Yes, there's always um.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
Weird council meeting in there of the, it's a cow.
Yeah, gotcha.
Right. So I did put that on the calendar because I thought people would wanna know when that is, so. One last business day, there we've got, October, we've got Thanksgiving, the week of the election, um. And then we have our last meeting and then, yes. Then there's rules around the inaugural meeting has to be within the first ten days of the month of November. So I didn't think it was very fair to have it on the tenth with the potential that a new mayor may be having to go the very next day to Speaker Remembrance Day. Or they could take a pass on Speaker Remembrance Day. Or they could take a pass on speaking at Remembrance Day, but. And historically something that the mayor has always done. So if nobody wants to pass that, then I'm like.
We look at that, we, can we look at that and just bring it back in fit October or whenever?
Yeah. So somebody can move.
Or can we just amend the one in April, the the A K B L G one and everything else is the same, like can I?
Well, the 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 issue with that is just take a look at the calendar is what happens is that May, then you've you now got a meeting to like a a week apart. Right, like you you don't back the meetings up when. One week on top of the other, the other thing is you could.
Move April, you move May and you move the first to June, all one week and then the June ones are now two apart instead of three apart. Because it's already starting to create a gap in June.
Yeah, yeah, which I tried to do last year to give staff time for vacations and planning and.
Okay, I I think it sounds better that you've heard the feedback and you know, go.
Okay, well, then refer it, refer it.
But I move referral.
Okay, thank you, it's been referred, can I have a secondor? All favor referral, okay?
Okay, thanks for bringing it forward early though.
So we're just gonna, we'll get that back, okay?
Yeah, that'll come back, I mean, like this is the whole idea of looking at it now, I mean, historically, it's usually come in like December and. Everybody's not paying any attention, it says okay and. I'll just leave until December and bring that the same one again. I don't, I don't, I don't know how to work the crowd, um, nobody will notice, it's supposed to be like, oh, pass.
Thanks for all your work on that.
Yeah, yeah. So. Okay, and then we are on to fire dispatch contract. So staff have identified the regional district of Fraser Fort George as the preferred provider. For outsourcing fire dispatch services for the city, at the June third regular meeting, council approved negotiations. With the regional district of Fraser Fort George for fire dispatch services and further to bring back the contract for the service for council approval. So who? Yeah, moved by councillor Woodward and then can I have a secondor and then if there's any questions, um. The C E O can go, so a second by councillor Tate. Okay, so what's the, we're moving.
Yep, so I'll read it.
Yeah.
The council passes the following resolution. The council approved the contract with the regional district of Fraser Fort George pending legal review for the provision of fire dispatch services.
Uh, so we can, we have done legal review, so we can remove that.
Okay, so it would be the council approved the contract with the regional district of Fraser Fort George.
For the.
For the perit, for the provision of fire dispatch services, okay?
Okay, so that's been moved and seconded, anybody have any couns- questions for um the C E O?
Um, yeah, we we've talked about this with the fire master plan through the chair, did you want to just give us a a reminder, a brief overview of?
Yeah, I think, you know, this came up actually prior to the uh fire master plan where. I I think the. Hebert uh reported the really the unsustainability of the amount of overtime that our. Firefighters were um who are to incur because um. Anytime we had a call out, we had to call somebody back into the hall to to man the um dispatch service. And then with N G nine one one, we would need uh someone manning the. Fire dispatch uh twenty four seven three sixty five and that would require five to six new firefighters just for that. Um, part of the service and with technology of today. It makes sense to um. You know. Use a third party, in in this case with Fraser Fort George, they're not having to add any additional staff to. Accommodate Nelson, so um ourselves and the other current partners all benefit from. Economies will scale, so. Um, this was the, we went out uh to R F P and looked at. The other uh potential dispatch uh providers, this was the best value plus. Uh, the R D C K already uses uh. Fraser Fort George for their dispatch, so it made sense that we would. Um, you know, if the if the pricing was similar, in this case, it's preferable that we would go with the same provider. The the amount, their uh budget is fixed for the next uh uh for the three years. Three, slightly three years, we're probably not gonna actually transition into that until either very late in twenty twenty five. Early twenty twenty six, so really for those three years. Their contract is is fixed, it includes um renewal of their. Of of their um technology, et cetera, so so we think this is. Will provide additional so-called boots on the ground and uh, you know. Cost of service at a much affordable cost.
Good.
Councillor Payne?
So I just want to go over the numbers a little bit because I I want to, when when I look at this, I think I've figured it out, but I don't know if it's clear. If someone from the public is reading it, um I'm not sure what page it is, page two, financial terms. So the two point nine four million total annual service, that's the cost of Nelson um. District of Fraser Fort George.
Yeah, that's how much it costs, right?
Right, okay, so that's the part that I think maybe there should could be some clarity, just. Just so anyone reading this, will they understand that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, uh, annual operating contributions Nelson share based on approximately total.
Actual contract, yeah.
In the, not in, well, not in the contract, in the expl- well. So that if I were a member of the public reading this, it would be harder for me to put two and two together. That two point nine four million. There's money that I am, um.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, help me.
So, but the projected cost is one eighty, so that's the guesstimate of that two point nine four.
That's our share of the two point nine four.
That's our share of the two point nine four.
So I I get that part, it's further down as well though, so when I looked at this first time, I'm like, whoa. Um, and then the one-time implementation fee is the two hundred and thirty thousand, but we get a hundred and ninety in grants for that.
Yeah.
So that's gonna be approximately forty thousand for us to implement, and then. Is it, does it say anywhere Nelson also pays the CAD R M S licensing, what that is?
Yeah, so if you look at the paragraph above, up to thirty thousand per year ongoing technology support.
That's what that is, okay, okay. So the ongoing technology support is the same as the CAD R M S licensing, okay? That's, that's what I mean, some of those things are really clear if you know what you're. Reading, but I try and look at things from, you know, somebody from the public who's not as. Um, uh, and that was. So then the other thing I just wanted to bring up, so I did get the staff overtime hours so that we could. And that was shared out with everybody, so we can see that it's obviously a cost savings to us compared to what we've been spending. To get the level of service that we need.
I should note that you you'll probably never get overtime to zero, right? There's always gonna be a base level, yes.
Yeah, I don't think we're ever gonna save the entire amount, but when you look at these numbers, it's a pretty easy equation to understand. That there are going to be savings to us. Um, sorry, and then. And then that is based, so that hundred eighty thousand dollars is based on the number of events per year. So if we reduce the number of events per year, we reduce that amount.
Yeah, that's correct, well, and it's relative to, like if everybody reduced.
Down, then, yeah.
Then.
Yeah.
Then the cost per event would go up because they have a certain budgeted amount as their baseline, okay? Um, so then that always brings me to uh service levels, which I think is one of the important things that we need to be. Looking at during our budgeting period, because as the mayor has mentioned many, many times. Uh, the provincial and federal government downloading services on us. Um, I think this is an example of that when we're responding to all of the medical calls as well as the fire calls. And that's the other number that I'd be interested in seeing as we're going into the budget period is what is the breakdown? Of um, do we have that information or?
I have the chief with.
Okay, that's what I, I I assume we have, but I I think that is something that would be worth looking at as we move forward. I think it's just a conversation that we need to have around service levels. And what we can afford as a city and what the residents of the city can afford as we know. So many other things are getting so much more expensive.
So right now, I think for twenty twenty five, we're projecting about fourteen hundred calls versus seventeen hundred. So we we do anticipate this is the high end of uh dispatch costs, and we're hoping that will be under that. Um, but we can. Yeah, there's, you know, probably the dispatch part of the call out is the probably the less expensive part of. It's the staffing levels that you have to manage that call out is probably the.
So if we go down to a fourteen hundred, then it's gonna be more expensive per incident, so at seventeen hundred, it's a hundred and five per incident.
Well. Depends.
Okay.
Right, so yes, we would, you know, we would go down, um. You know, we would pay less than what they leave. Um, that lesser amount, but it all ultimately depends on pool as a whole, like, you know, other. Other areas could be growing, so we can remain the same and and our dispatch costs will go down.
Yeah, in general, I think it's a a great way to go, but I think it's just that we want to be really clear when we're asked to be being. You know, to be more transparent, um how we're, how this is a a solid benefit, not just another. Um, item on people's tax bill.
The other thing that probably doesn't get picked up when we just talk about overtime costs is, you know, there's vacations that they can't take. Or training that they, you know, have to delay or things like that, that they can't fit into their schedule, like piles up and there's just. You know, the exhaustion on the.
The mental health effects on our employees.
More intangible, but.
Yeah, nope, one hundred percent agree. So yeah, thanks. Incalculable, incalculable.
Any other questions on that? Okay, this has been moved and seconded, all those in favor? And that carries, thank you, moving on to item number eleven. We have reports, we have finance, development services and the late item. Um, addition of the accounts payable which you've all received by email during the dinner break. Um, is there anything there that anybody wants to pull out or does somebody want to move uh all the items? Uh, one, two and three for information, councillor Woodward? All three?
I'll move all three.
Yeah, so our secondor. Councillor Page. Any concerns or anything? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor for receiving the information? And that carries, thank you counselors, there is no late items, no notice motions. And therefore, can I have a resolution to adjourn? Thank you. Go ahead, go in camera now. So somewhere I have, where is my little thing that says? I don't have my note, here's my little note, says.
It's not there.
I'm not there, that we're going into camera, I do not know what the. Sorry, this is what happens when I work off all the paper.
That is the meeting of council that the public interest requires that persons other than members of council and staff and any other. Audiences be excluded from this meeting and that the meeting of the council continue under section ninety one. Give me a letter regarding something that falls under section ninety one. The acquisition disposition or expropriation of land or improvements if the council considers that disclosure could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality.
Thank you. When it's not in front of me on a piece of paper, I.
Now, it's possible there's a few in camera item updates, I wouldn't find given.
Okay, that's fine, we'll see where we get to, but we'll start with um.
So we'll, sorry, we'll just make sure we off the street.
So.
No, not yet.
That's been.
So we gotta move to go in camera.
To go in camera, can I sell that?
So can I move to go in camera?
Yes.
Yes.
And secondor please? Okay, second by councillor Lockenberg, all those in favor, and that carries, so.
I will just get this off here.
We'll just make sure that we're off. Just while we're waiting for that.